This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Good evening. It is December 6th, 2021. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting is being conducted via remote participation. There is no chat room for this meeting. If you have technical issues, please let Athena and me know. If you want to ask a question, raise your hand, and when you're not speaking, please remain mute. I'm going to state that given we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the December 6th meeting of the Amherst Town Council to order at 6:31. And I will now begin taking role, although I'm going to have to come back and make some notes about other people as they join. Shalini Baumil. At this point, you can take this slide down. Okay, I'll come back for that. Alyssa Brewer.
Present.
Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Darcy Dumont.
Here.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Present.
Dorothy Pam.
Present.
Oh, thank you, Dorothy. Evan Ross.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Andy Steinberg. Waiting. Steve Schreiber. Just came on. Steve, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Sarah Schwartz.
Present.
Okay, so we'll keep a lookout for Shalini and Andy. Okay. We're going to begin with the State of the Town address. And we have a set of four different slides. And we're joined tonight by Alison McDonald, who is the Chair of the Regional School Committee and the Elementary School Committee. And also by Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Mike Morris. We're also joined by Chris Hoffman, who is the Vice President of the Library. And also Sharon Sherry and Paul Bachmann. So if we could have the slides, please.
It looks like Andy's joined. Can we confirm that he can hear us, please?
Yes. Andy, can you hear us? I'm having trouble connecting. Hold on. Andy, can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Um. This is the third State of the Town address. And it continues to be an honor and a privilege to serve as President of the Town Council. I'm actually going to not flip to the last slide, but I want to start this whole address by thanking some people. Because I think we forget too often to do that. During this challenging time, we are served and well protected by our very outstanding staff, our many town departments, and our first responders. It is our town staff that keep government moving. We are in the process of completing the Town Manager's evaluation, where he continues to receive predominantly commendable and satisfactory ratings. Amherst is challenging in so many ways because of the Town Manager and his staff. We are ahead of the curve. Continuing to serve as the Clerk of the Town Council is Athena O'Keefe. She is simply outstanding. Need to find something? She can. Without hesitation, she helps all. She never misses a beat, and in the process has become valued resource to all of us. We also want to recognize the many people who serve on our town committees. And the many people who in the town go out of their way to make sure that we know how they feel, whether it's in agreement or not. And finally, we would like to thank Amherst Media for their ongoing service. The Town Councillors are an outstanding group of 13 individuals independently minded. Each councillor has served as a Chair or Vice Chair of a Town Council Committee, ranging from communications outreach and appointments to audit our four standing committees and the various other committees that we serve on, such as the Elementary School Committee. I'd like to make sure that you recognize our three at-large councillors, Alyssa Brewer, Mandy Jo Hanneke, and Andy Steinberg. Kathy Shane and Sarah Schwartz represent District One. Pat DeAngelis joins me in District Two. Dorothy Pam and George Ryan represent District Three. Evan Ross and Steve Schreiber, District Four. And Shalini Baumil and Darcy Dumont represent District Five. Each brings an important set of values and perspectives, much needed in this town. And while virtual meeting limits how we are able to recognize people, I ask that you let them know about your appreciation for their work. Throughout our three years, the councils continued to fulfill... Please change the slides. I'm sorry. I need to remember to say that. Keep going. Okay. Throughout the three years, the councils continue to fill the requirements of charter. And we keep taking notes about things we'd like to change. It includes the kinds of things listed on this particular slide. Next slide, please. There are also other charter requirements in the last three years, and particularly this last year, that we have fulfilled. In addition to the master plan we adopted a year ago, we have filed legislation to allowing us to implement ranked choice voting once it is approved by the legislature. We've received the report on participatory budgeting. And we have received and submitted our redistricting plan developed by the Districting Advisory Committee. We're waiting for official notice of its acceptance. Next slide. While we continue to be virtually, we have in fact returned to gathering on Town Hall steps and to read proclamations and other public events outdoors. But we continue to meet with organizations virtually as well. Next slide. While it may seem routine to many, we also have to continue to do the business of the council, the kinds of things listed here. Next slide. And as mentioned earlier, in addition to the Redistricting Advisory Board, we also have made sure that our pollings places remain safe and healthy, as well as ensuring voter rights. Next slide. Accomplishments over the three years are numerous, especially in the face of the COVID pandemic. I've chosen to present this in categories identical to the Town Manager's policy goals because we can only accomplish these goals together. Next slide. In the area of climate action. In our first year, we created a Climate Action Committee and an Energy and Climate Action Committee, and then adopted the Climate Action Goals. This year, we received from that committee the Climate Action Adaptation and Resilience Plan. We have also advanced community choice aggregation and the landfill solar project. Next slide. We've been most fortunate to have outstanding town leadership in the face of COVID, complemented by an amazing Department of Health and over 200 volunteers who have been offering testing and vaccinations in multiple locations. We also wish to thank UMass for being outstanding partner in this effort. The Community Safety Working Group recommended and the Town Council approved the creation of the CREST program. And we are looking at the reorganization of those departments over the next two meetings. And with the Town Manager, we continue to look at the additional recommendations of the CSWG. Next slide. The next four slides actually deal with economic vitality. Recovering from the pandemic will take significant efforts and determination. Next slide. This includes ongoing partnerships with the Bid and the Chamber and our human service nonprofits. We have invested in our recreational outdoor space, including a pending one with Hickory Ridge. And we have increased the use of our public ways, as well as adding to them with a performance shell that's on the budget, which is on the agenda now. Next slide. We have passed or have pending several zoning bylaws. Next slide. And we have passed many, several general bylaws as well. Both of these areas have been reviewed in our first year, and we did make the necessary changes as we became the city known as the Town of Amherst. Next slide. In the area of capital investments, I'm sorry. We made great progress both in the Jones Library and the Elementary School Building. The North Amherst Library is underway. Renovation's being supported by an anonymous gift. And let me just skip to the other few things we have here. The capital inventory is underway, and the five-year capital improvement plan was presented to us last budget cycle. The Centennial Water Plant is working up toward renovation, but we still remain hopeful about getting for, moving for with DPW and the Fire and EMS. Next slide. We can only do all this with sound fiscal guidance, and we have been able to receive that. Our audits are outstanding, our credit rating is excellent, and our reserves are actually quite significant. Next slide. One of the highlights of this area this last year was CRC's work on a comprehensive housing policy, which they did by consulting with seven other town committees. We've also increased our affordable housing on Belcher Town Road and East Street School, and continue to work on the 132 North Hampton Road. However, we still would like to find a long-term shelter for the homeless. Next slide. And in the area of racial equity and social justice, we are looking at the approval of a Department of Diversity Equity and Inclusion. We have created an African Heritage Reparations Assembly that will make recommendations to us as we move forward on that very historic challenge. Next slide, please. So in the future, as we look forward, we still have our six goals, and we are looking at how they should be. And in the next meeting, we continue to pass responsible capital and operating budgets, an ever-increasing challenge. And councillors and the public, as we look forward, we need to make this job more manageable. We need to shorten our town council meetings and the number of them. We need to strive towards additional transparency and additional residential engagement. Thank you. I'm going to move on to Paul Bachmann.
Thank you, Lynn. If you go to the next slide, please.
Actually, you don't need to go more.
Couple of slides. Yeah. And the one after that, please, to do a favor for everyone. So the State of the Town address is a time to take stock, to look back at all that we've accomplished and to reflect on our service. It's also a time to look ahead at the challenges and opportunities that lie in the future. And Lynn has asked me to do all this in seven minutes, so no problem, Lynn. So I'm going to say this right up front. The State of the Town is strong. We certainly have work to do. Boy, is there ever a lot going on, but I want to begin with why we all should feel good about this work and what lies ahead. Next slide. First, it's the people. We have experienced knowledgeable department heads who have developed and forged their leadership skills over the years, never more so than during the pandemic. These are people who have dedicated their professional careers to serving the public, and I'm grateful to be able to serve alongside them. I don't get to thank them and their staffs very often, so I want to take this moment to thank every town employee for your continued service to the town and our community. Our organization is what it is because of you. Next slide. And what about our finances? I can't say this enough. Our finances are strong because we have superb systems in place, and we are excellent at managing our budgets. This is largely due to our finance team, who are diligent about ensuring our books are balanced and laws are followed. But ultimately, our elected leaders have consistently made wise financial decisions over the years. And you don't have to take my word for it. In May of this year, the financial ratings team from Standard and Poor's met with us and examined our operations. Their conclusion is shown on this slide. Next slide. It has taken years to build reserves so that we are in a position to maintain our superb bond rating and to take on the major capital projects that are before us. Our entire operation, our plans for new buildings and new staff, is predicated on a strong financial foundation. Budget management, strategic building of reserves, credible financial policies. While our finances are strong, we must be vigilant to maintain this footing. Next slide. We certainly have financial challenges, and that's for sure. But in here are some of them. But I believe that they are manageable, and we want to really pay attention to the fourth bullet down, which is the pressure on taxpayers. That's something that we always think about and discuss and want to factor into every decision, financial decision we make on behalf of the town. Next slide. And just before we get into our accomplishments, I want to recognize the leadership and commitment of our elected officials. We are fortunate to have elected officials specifically on the Town Council School Committee and Library Trustees, who take on these roles, not for the accolades, but out of a commitment to public service in the hope of making the town a better place. Believe me, there is very little glory in this work. It's hard. You get criticized. You can even lose friends. All in the service of making the best decision you can for our community. Whether you serve on the Town Council or the Planning Board or the Community Safety Working Group, the work is hard, emotionally draining. And I thank each of you for agreeing to enter this public arena. Next slide. Managing a complex, nearly $100 million organization does not come without its challenges. In a tumultuous employment market, we have managed the inevitable turnover and staff changes at every level of our organization. But our systems have held, and we continue to provide high-level service to the public. It's important to note that every town department stepped up during this COVID crisis, every single one. Town employees have been on duty every day to ensure that we have clean water to drink, that our wastewater is removed properly, and that there's always a response from fire police or EMS when you call dispatch at 911. We have, even during the pandemic, we have opened new playgrounds at Kendrick Park and Groff Park, and work is underway at the new dog park and at installing solar panels on the landfill. We continue to move forward with the purchase of the Hickory Ridge Golf Course, and plans have been finalized for an addition at the North Amherst Library, which is, as Lynn said, funded entirely by an anonymous donor. Next slide. For its part, the Town Council established broad goals for the Town Manager, which of course filters down to the entire team. I will not go into detail on these because Lynn has already touched on many of the points I would have made. Suffice it to say that we have organized our work to meet the council's goals. A detailed report on how we met these goals is included in my performance self-evaluation I provided to the Town Council. Next slide. I do want to touch on some things, and I'm going to let you read the slides, but I'll talk over them very quickly, and we can look at these slides later if you want to. The Energy and Climate Action Committee put together a set of challenging, yet realistic goals with milestones that will help the town take concrete steps to reduce our carbon footprint. These are some of the things that they have identified. And the last bullet is one that we're really excited about. We got a grant to start a town-wide feasibility study for solar that we're hoping to get started very soon. Next slide. For community health and safety, our main mission over the past 20 months has been to keep the community healthy, safe, and secure during the massive pandemic. Our team has done that, and we've done it really well, especially when you look at other cities and towns across the country. With the kind of population we have, with the influx of students, I think we've really met the challenge. The sheer number of initiatives that were undertaken by town staff is impressive. Everything from emergency rental assistance for those who could not pay their rent to a range of actions designed to support our local businesses. And I do, I can't go forward without recognizing the energy and tireless creativity of the leaders of the Bid and the Chamber who have been shoulder to shoulder with us in finding new solutions to help our local businesses. Next slide. And in economic vitality, we have been superb, and the governor even mentioned this, securing grants for making infrastructure improvements in our town. We have been aggressive about securing our outside grants, and this is just a few of them. But we have brought millions of dollars into the town to fund everything from the two parks to making downtown improvements, to ramps and sidewalk and crosswalk improvements. Next slide. The town staff continued to move forward, as Lynn mentioned, on affordable housing projects on North Hampton Road, Belcher Town Road, and the East Street School. And we are actively working with Craig Stores to find a suitable site for a long-term solution for the homeless shelter. This is a unique time that we have available to us. We have funds. We have a knowledgeable staff at Craig Stores. So we're hoping to really solve that problem once and for all with our regional partners as well. Next slide. The Community Safety Working Group has given voice to the call for racial justice in Amherst. We have budgeted for and have been working on implementing two new departments. The Department of Diversity Equity Inclusion and the Community Responders for Equity, Safety, and Service, most commonly known as the CREST program. Envisioning a new way of responding to crises in the community is important. Concurrently, the town has become a nationwide leader in moving forward on reparations, breaking ground on what this means in our community and in the nation. You know, in working with the CSWG, I'm often struck by the profoundness of changing how power works, of working to ensure that every community in Amherst has a seat at the table. It's not lost on me that as a white, cis, straight man who must work within the framework of existing state law in the town charter, I need to question when I am helping and when I am hindering the process. It can be challenging to maintain my own moral compass, but there's nothing more important than this work. I've been impressed by both the police departments and the CSWG's commitment to the process. I thank them both, and I'm glad that together, as a town, we're thinking through how best to assure that every community member feels safe and well-served by our staff. Next slide. And lastly, we're seeing real progress with our four major capital projects. We have a financial plan in place that proves we can take on all four projects if we follow the plan. We have major grants in hand for the new elementary school and the renovations to the Jones Library. And the Town Council has approved funding so that both projects are advancing in the design stages. We continue to seek a suitable site for the DPW, which will free up that site for the Fire Department Headquarters. And the Town Council has allocated funds to protect those designs as well. Next slide. We are in challenging times. People like to say uncharted waters. As a community, we are at our best when, even when we disagree, we maintain our basic civility and curiosity about one another's perspectives and avoid name-calling and otherizing. I appreciate the opportunity to serve you and the people of Amherst. I'm privileged to work with our incredible staff. I love living and working and being part of this special community. And I appreciate the progressive, intelligent governance provided by the Town Council, and most directly, the leadership and guidance provided by Town Council President Lynn Griesmer. I thank you for the remarkable opportunity to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And we'll go right on to Alison.
Thank you. I seem to have lost my screen, but I'm Alison McDonald. I'm Chair of the Amherst School Committee. I'm here as a representative of the full Amherst School Committee, which is a highly collaborative and really productive group of colleagues who may be in the room. So Peter Demling, Ben Harrington, Hala Lord, and Carrie Spitzer. And as Dr. McMorris is also joining us, and he's heading up a phenomenally talented and strong group of staff and educators in our schools. Next slide. This may be familiar to many. This is our mission, and it guides and informs all that we do in our school, and it's helpful. I find it helpful to review it again to ground ourselves on why we're here. The mission of our schools is to provide all students with a high-quality education that enables them to be contributing members of a multi-ethnic, multicultural, and pluralistic society. We seek to create an environment that achieves equity for all students and ensures that each student is a successful learner, is fully respected, and learns to respect others. Next slide. Amherst has three public schools that serve nearly 1,000 students in grades K through six. An additional 55 students are enrolled in pre-K at Crocker Farm. Our three schools, Wildwood, Fort River, and Crocker Farm, are roughly similar in size and demographics, and our student population is highly diverse. More than half are Black, Indigenous, or other people of color. More than one in four speak a first language that is not English. Additionally, more than half of our students are high-needs, as defined by the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Thirty-nine percent are economically disadvantaged, and more than one in five have disabilities. A budget of $24.4 million this year, along with critical federal, state, and other grants, enables us to deliver on our mission to support the needs and learning journey of every one of these students. Next slide. We enjoy a strong statewide reputation for our public schools, a legacy that our community values and prioritizes. Our elementary school district consistently meets state progress and accountability goals, though persistent gaps do remain among high-needs students and some other groups. A Commonantist dual-language program based at Fort River is now in its third year and has expanded this year to encompass kindergarten through second grade. The education program in our schools is enhanced through art, music, and technology education that's provided in weekly specialist classes, as well as integrated into grade-level unit studies. And an innovative school garden program is integrated into our science curriculum. We continue to offer low-average class sizes to promote learning with a student-teacher ratio of nine to one compared to a state average of 12 to one. Next. Amherst is one of four member towns in a regional school district with two secondary schools. The Amherst Regional Middle School serving grades seven and eight, and Amherst Regional High School serving grades nine through 12. The schools have a total of 1,270 students from the four towns of Amherst, Pelham, Leverett, and Chutesbury. Our student population in the regional schools is also highly diverse, with nearly half being BIPOC. Nearly half of students are high-needs, with one in three being economically disadvantaged, and more than one in five having disabilities. A budget of $31.9 million this year, along with the critical grants, enables us to deliver on our mission to support the needs of these students in our secondary schools. Like our elementary schools, our regional schools enjoy an excellent reputation thanks to our dedicated, high-quality educators, staff, and administrators. Students at both the middle school and high school are offered an array of electives. At the high school, our core academic program includes a diverse offering of AP and other advanced courses. Two-thirds of 11th and 12th graders complete advanced courses, and three-quarters of all high school students take courses in the arts, a reflection of the diversity and popularity of these offerings. Our schools provide strong community and school programs that support student well-being and socially-emotional health, such as our family center, the Bright Program, and restorative justice. Additionally, after piloting later start times during the pandemic of the last school year, we implemented a permanent change this year. We prioritize smaller classes to promote learning, and our schools provide high-quality in-district specialized programs for intensive special needs students. There's a wide array of clubs and sports together with all of these that define the rich character of our regional schools. Next. While the budget for elementary schools has grown over the years, the increases in costs, such as for transportation or for staff salaries and benefits, have grown faster than the funding we received, and we've had to make cumulative cuts of nearly $1 million to the services we provided in 2019 and 20. Though no cuts come without pain, we've tried to make these cuts as much as possible through a combination of enrollment-driven adjustments or savings and elimination of so-called inefficiencies. So far, we've been able to make these cuts while minimizing the direct impact to our students or our mission. Next slide. Grants awarded to the Amherst Elementary Schools provide an important supplement to our budget and increased significantly last year as a result of the substantial federal and state funding related to COVID. While these awards, for the most part, are restricted to specific areas of expense and can't replace or supplement municipal funding, they're critical in supporting our ability to deliver on our mission for every student. In our regional schools, our budget has actually declined since 2019-20. Like that of our elementary schools, costs have grown faster than funding we receive, and we've had to make cumulative cuts of nearly $2 million to the services we provided in 2019-20. Because the method used to apportion the regional budget to the four member towns has changed in each budget year, the amount that Amherst has funded has been flat or increased while the overall budget has declined. Similar to the elementary school's budget, we've tried to make these cuts as much as possible through a combination of enrollment-driven adjustments or savings and elimination of so-called inefficiencies. And again, we've been able to make these cuts while minimizing as much as possible the direct impact to students. The next slide is, like in our elementary schools, grants awarded to the regional schools provide an important supplement to our budget and increased significantly last year. grants awarded to the regional schools provide an important supplement to our budget and increased significantly last year related to COVID. And finally, the goals for this year for both the region and Amherst Center in four areas. Supporting the MSBA-supported elementary school building project and planning for move of the sixth grade, Amherst Sixth Grade to the Regional Middle School. Continued focus on pandemic response, including stewarding and using our asset professor and COVID relief funds to support student academic and well-being needs. Continued focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and work on our curriculum and instruction, including looking to align our elementary math curriculum with our seven-to-twelve math program and evaluating the schedule, block schedule in place at the high school. I thank you for your support and invite you to join the Amherst School Committee on Thursday this week at six PM for a public forum about the FY twenty-three elementary school budget priorities. Details for this forum are on the town and the district calendars. With that, I thank you.
Thank you. We'll go right on to Chris Hoffman, and then I have a few final words. Chris?
Okay. Just waiting for the slides to come up. There we go. Okay, well, it's safe to say this fiscal year was another tumultuous year for the library. Fortunately, I can say that it was a tumultuous year in many good ways. Next slide, please. Of course, influencing everything we did this year was our response to the pandemic. You could see a brief summary of the timeline over the past year. We gradually increased our services to the public. Starting out simply with people being able to pick up their books outside the library to, just about a year later, actually welcoming the patrons back into the building. Along the way, we've added other features such as honors cart. We have the outdoor tent, which everyone is familiar with. Now that we are open, I'm happy to report that from what I hear, everybody, the public, has been very glad to be back in the building. They are all very cooperative with applying with following the mandates, public safety mandates. Next slide, please. So here's some highlights along the way of what's been going on at the Jones Library. The ESL Center used to promote video technology to maintain one-on-one tutoring, citizenship, practice interviews, and conversation groups while the library building was closed. Thanks to an LBLC grant, Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, for virtual learning, we were able to reach out to patrons of all ages and, for example, provide a makerspace workshop for kids, anti-racism workshop for teens and caregivers, and a cooking demonstration for adults. We use our social media to establish a Black Lives Matter Book of the Week, alternate choosing between children's and adults' books, highlighting the breadth of our collection. The young adults started a, young adult services started a teen virtual D and D program and offered a two-six-month program. It was very popular. It expanded into two groups. During the months when the building was closed, we established and maintained an honor card outside the library for people to browse and check out books without anyone having to be there. We created the Jones Library Book of the Month Club, members would fill out a questionnaire about their reading taste and then have two books spun at hold for them for the month. The most popular service of the pandemic during the pandemic closure was our book bundles. The kids staff select themed bundles which patrons could request for contactless pickup by a form on our website. And of course, not everything was virtual. Even during the pandemic, we had our large tent outside, which was able to be used for our reference service, our very popular program computer support, and various other socially distant but outdoor meetings and programs. Next slide, please. Just a few financial graphs. A couple of things I just wanted to point out about them. One is, even though this was a challenging year, we were able to keep our endowment brought down to four and a half percent. That's higher than we would have liked, but it is definitely less than we have done in previous years. We definitely take the maintaining the endowment for future generations very seriously. On the other hand, on the expenses side kind of hidden in there, our operating expenses have been lower in the past few years because we've had several retirements from the staff that will have to be filled in the future, which will have to be paid for, which will be putting stress on our budget. But we will see how we handle that. Next slide, please. And of course, there's the expansion and renovation project approved by the town council in April. Excuse me. This has been years in the making, but it's safe to say the hours and hours of work put in by the library staff and trustees and others this year set a new record. We had to create plans, apply for grants, reach out to the public by a bi-weekly library chats, and of course answer the hundreds and hundreds, well, just hundreds, of hard questions the town council had for us. On the left there, you can see some of the opportunities and challenges we face. We want to be fiscally responsible. We want to be as green and sustainable as possible. Obviously, we want to be accessible. We want to write social justice. We want to be respectful of the historic nature of the library, provide needs for the populations, teens, children, and families, children in particular. We also have some challenges in there, such as how to provide library support while we are under construction. And as you can see from the timeline, that's roughly two years that the building will not be available. And we will need to work on that. So this year, we've created plans to address all of these issues. What's coming up now is we need to actually address and implement those solutions. And finally, this isn't really for this fiscal year, but I would like personally to believe that the overwhelming support of the voters in November for this project shows their faith in the vision and wisdom of the staff, trustees, counselors, and the many others who've worked so long and so hard on this project this year and in past years. And as this renovated and expanded Jones Library, we'll be the library Amherst needs for the twenty-first century. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And let me just conclude this portion of our meeting with a couple of comments. First of all, Chris, thank you for your years of service as a library trustee. We know you've chosen not to run again and will be not serving the town in that capacity. But we always look forward to future ways you might join us in serving Amherst. I want to mention that in addition to members of the Jones Library Trustees, the school committee and the school committee and the staff. There are forty attendees tonight in the audience, and that includes some of those various people. In addition to that, Representative Mindy Dom has joined us in the audience. She has been invited specifically for this meeting, but joins us for many. And it gives us an opportunity to again thank her and Joe Commerford for the many ways in which they have helped the town within the state legislature, both to obtain money and to obtain ongoing legislation and working with us to do that. I would like to mention that we have already started to receive the annual reports from the various required organizations, and they will be placed in your packets as we move forward. And so before we go on to announcements, I do want to also make sure that Shalini Balmil, who has joined us, can hear us and we can hear her.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Shalini. Okay, we're going to announcements. And I just want to highlight one that is up here and one that is not up here. The one that is up here is the very last one, which is the Town Service and Outreach Committee Meeting on December ninth, this Thursday. And it will be a meeting in which we will look at, first, in an information session, the reorganization proposals for both DEI, Diversity Equity Inclusion, and the CREST program. And then there will be a public forum for those as well. The one that's not on here is Saturday, December eleventh, and that is a four-towns meeting. And it is the second of meeting that we've had like that this year, and it is to start looking at the budget. With that, we're going to go on to general public comment. And I ask all people who plan to make general public comment to raise their hand now because I'm going to stick to the hands that are raised in the beginning. Give you a moment to do so. This is the only general public comment tonight. Right now, I am seeing seven hands and eight. Give you another minute. Okay, we're down to seven. So we're going to start with, residents are welcome to express their opinions for up to three minutes. If you can keep it to two, we appreciate that. We do not engage in discussion or dialogue with you at this time. And so we're asking Harry Pelts to enter the room, state your name, where you live.
My name is Harry Pelts. I live in District Three at thirty-two North Prospect Street in Amherst. I've spoken to the council before. I'll be very brief tonight at once more. We'll thank you for your service. But I am opposed to the rapid movement toward the garage on North Prospect Street, which is actually the east or north Pleasant Street Garage, as it is known as. And I just would like to point out that it is in a landlocked area with limited car access at the edge of the town, incredibly next to a historic residence district. And there's been a lack of current studies and consideration of other locations. The garage is built, has been built without further studies and consideration of other locations. I believe, in my opinion, that Amherst will regret the decision to place a garage in this location and it will harm the town, not help it. Thank you for your consideration, and I will yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for joining us tonight, Harry. Ira, please enter the room. Ira Brick, please enter the room, state your name and where you live, and thank you for submitting comments in advance.
I'm Ira Brick, two fifty-five Strong Street. I urge you again to not pass the zoning bylaws that will create an overlay district for a garage behind CVS and to not define mixed-use buildings in a way that will be bad for downtown and our community. Regarding the garage, it is far from proven to be the best site. Will disrupt the quiet enjoyment of a historic neighborhood. Go against the advice of experts who studied Amherst parking situation. It's hard to find and even harder to enter and exit. Will need removal of parking that already functions fine in a residential district and will not have the setbacks and other restrictions of a well-designed garage. Also, there's no reason why this overlay district needs to be created to study if a parking garage will work there. Plus, the planning department says they are focused on this location instead of others, only because they were directed to look only at this option. Regarding the mixed-use definition, the results of that poor plan will leave us with dorm-styled units with little commercial presence. Thirty percent of the first floor is all you are requiring, that you reduce from fifty percent. And allowing that thirty percent to not be where shoppers can easily access, but a rooftop bar or averaged among several buildings that will make our downtown unusable and uninteresting. You rejected the notion of many apartment buildings downtown, but then defined a mixed-use building so that it quacks like an apartment. Except that mixed-use buildings won't require a five-hundred-foot separation as apartment buildings would. I also disagree that there aren't retail businesses that would locate here. We have the region's major employer abutting downtown. Our community spends twenty-two million dollars per year on groceries, and we have a history of very few empty stores over the years. As an ex-retailer who owned a building with five stores to fill, I know that it took initiative, promotion, proper pricing, and a good deal of selling to find good tenants. This is job one of every landlord, developer, town economic director, business improvement district, and chamber of commerce. There are many vibrant towns in the region and planet. There's no special reason Amherst can't fill our town with interesting businesses. Walk around Brattleboro, East Hampton, Great Barrington, Columbus, Ohio, for examples of towns with vibrancy. Please consider that both topics, the CVS garage and how to define a mixed-use building, are not yet adequately studied. It would be more appropriate for you to have the next town council to think these through more and better. And in the next four weeks, consider how to improve how well town council provides the needed public participation that Lynn, the council president, just noted is an opportunity for improvement. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Ira. Meg Gage, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Okay, there. Can you hear me? Great. Thanks. First of all, I want to appreciate and underscore what Lynn and Paul said about our fantastic staff in town. And also thank all of the councilors for these sort of shockingly enormous amount of service you've provided these last three years. Whether or not I agree with you on things, I appreciate everybody, all thirteen of you. And I appreciated the whole report, but that's not what I got on here to say. Since last week, I've noticed a number of people who support, I'm speaking about the zoning for the garage behind CVS. A number of people who support the change have sort of accused people who are opposed to it or suggested that people who are opposed to it don't understand that this isn't going to bring a garage. This is just the zoning. This isn't going to mean we have a garage back there. But think for a minute about how decisions are made. Imagine, for example, that you decide you want a deck on your house and a neighbor or a friend says, oh, put it over there. That's a good place. And so without looking at other places or thinking about access from inside the house out to the deck, or how you want to go from the deck out to the garden, or whether the placement is going to be really visible to the neighbors, so they're going to be able to see every single thing that happens on your deck or how it will look from the street front. You go ahead and get the building permit, thinking all the time, well, we're not necessarily going to build it there. We're just making the steps so we could if we want to. But you know how decisions are made. One, it's sort of momentum is created, and the decision hasn't been made to build a garage, but the possibility is there that we could. And no other possibilities have been developed. There's no other place to put the deck or to put the garage. And so I really think we need to look at, as others, I don't want to repeat what others have said, but I think everyone knows this isn't going to create the garage. That's not what this vote is about, but this vote is about getting ready to. And when it comes time, it'll be, well, we have the zoning, we have somebody who wants to build it, we have the land. What's the big deal? And that's what makes people frustrated, that we need to look at options. Look at the North Hampton Garage. You had access from three different directions. When you come in or go out, you can approach it from different directions. You can exit going to different places. It's a totally different kind of parking garage from what we're talking about here. I don't need to repeat the comments about. I mean, the traffic thing is crazy that you would go out onto a one-way street with no other way to go. And then people say, well, we could change the traffic or we could make it two ways or something. So all of those things need to be thought through, in my opinion. This isn't a plan yet. Thank you so much, everybody. I love that little clock, so I know I have three, two, one. Thank you all, and especially Lynn and Paul and all the people who spoke about them. That was a fantastic state-of-the-town report. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Ronnie Parker?
Hi, this is Ronnie Parker. I think you all know that I'm a fairly new resident here, so I found the state of the town unexpectedly to be really not unexpected that it was going to happen today. But I'm glad I was there here because it was really interesting. I'm so impressed. And I am also very grateful to all of you as the first town councillors, bringing a new form of government to us and putting it all in place. I missed all of it, of course, because I've only been here for two months. But I do want to express my appreciation of the challenges you faced. And I was actually going to speak to a comment that the head of the town council made somewhere else. And it was about working out our And it was about working out our solutions, working out solutions that respond to our most important values. And I thought to myself, you know, values are really important to me, and what are the values that guide us? So for me, the things, the values that really drew me to Amherst, you know, apart from it being progressive, and as a woman of color, married to a white man, I'm always worried about, you know, I've been exposed to so much rubbish, and at this point in my life, I didn't want to fight. I wanted to come someplace where I would just feel welcome, and I wasn't going to fight anyone. So it's sort of, and then I said I felt sad that I had to fight. But I'm not going to repeat all the things that I've said. As you know, I agree with the speakers before me that I really believe that this needs more thought. I did come with some questions. One is why only this particular site was picked for the overlay zone to study, to do all this analysis around why the others weren't picked? I would really like to know that. And I would like to know if you're considering studying the other places now that a lot of us have spoken up. And then in light of the housing shortage, which I'm very concerned about, here we've got this lot that is zoned residential. Why don't we put housing there? Why don't we put mixed-income housing? Why don't we bring in, make, create opportunities for people who live and work year-round and will contribute to the tax base of Amherst and increase our diversity? I don't know the rules. I'm not a housing expert. I know there has to be a way to do that. So I feel like the thinking hasn't been done yet. It's not finished yet. That's why I would appeal to you to wait to do your rezoning. And I do, again, really want to thank you and to let you know that I'm a business owner in downtown Amherst. I support business for myself and because I know how important small businesses are as an engine to economic development and growth and a thriving community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie, for joining us, and welcome to Amherst. Janet Keller, please enter the room, state your name and where you live. Janet, you can proceed.
Janet Keller. I live on Pulpit Hill Road in North Amherst. And the first thing I want to focus on is the critical importance of first-floor public-facing retail and restaurant businesses, and implore you to keep those and not make downtown just cheek-by-jowl apartments that that drain the streets of public life. And I would also want to reiterate my remarks that I have previously stated about the garage and the need to follow up on the studies that made suggestions, not just settle on this one place and rezone. It is setting the, it would be setting the stage for building that garage. And there are many, many things from the historic nature of that street, the narrowness, the loss of the other parking spaces. People have listed them all. And one thing I would have you remember is the people who live there. This would be incredibly disruptive to their lives and their, their plans. People like Ronnie, who just came, and people who've been comfortably living there in a mixed type of residential options neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Janet. Suzanne Musbratt, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hello, Suzanne Musbratt, thirty-eight North Prospect Street in Amherst. I'm going to speak very briefly because I've spoken many times to you about the question of the garage, the parking garage. I would like to second the comments by all the other speakers tonight about that. And just to say a few words about economic vitality, I have actually had a few days to go Christmas shopping lately. And I can tell you that retail is not dead. It's pretty dead in Amherst. It's not very dead in North Hampton. It's not very dead in East Hampton. It's not very dead along Route Nine. We have to provide space at affordable rents for businesses, both to serve the community and to attract the visitors we hope will come for the Bread and Circuses events. But we'd like them to come to shop and to eat and to spend time in our beautiful town. Please don't limit the amount of retail space to thirty percent. That's just making it very, very difficult to engender that kind of economic vitality. And then if we have hordes of people and we need a parking garage, come back and talk about it then. But you don't need to talk about it now when that lot is sitting empty most of the time. Thank you very much.
Suzanne, thank you for your comments. Tracy, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hello, my name is Tracy Zafian. I live on Blue Hills Road. I'm in District Three. And I was, I wanted to speak tonight about Article Seven and the proposed revisions. I did first want to just acknowledge, as some of the other speakers have done, just, just a thank you to the council and the town staff for all the work that's happened in the last few years, especially with all the challenges that have been going on. So in terms of Article Seven, I, I think it's great to have a more flexible approach relating to parking requirements and to not have a one-size-fits-all approach. Obviously, some housing will have greater parking demand than other housing. But at the same time, I do wonder, you know, and this has been revised quite a bit since it was first introduced. I do wonder if there's now, if there's too many changes, and it's become too flexible, and if it's adding unnecessary complexity. For example, the thing that I keep thinking about, and I've mentioned some of my concerns at TSO meetings as well. But one thing is, you know, when we look at alternative criteria for deciding the number of spaces needed, there's things such as the traffic impacts and parking utilization surveys. And the first question that comes up in my mind is whether the surveys and assessments will be conducted when UMass is in session or when UMass is not in session. Because in many neighborhoods, that's a significant difference, depending on when it's done. Also, the criteria related to proximity to public transit and alternative transportation, again, those are nice criteria, but they by themselves are not sufficient to reduce the demand for cars and for parking. For example, in my neighborhood, we're close to transit, a number of different bus routes. We're close to bikes, bike routes, both on University Drive, as well as the Norbertalk Trail. But still, every single teenager and adult on my street who has a driver's license also has a car, except for one. A one-family shares a car. I also wonder about this criteria, and this is the thing that I mainly brought up to TSO before, about the proximity to public parking, including on-street and off-street parking. And what does this actually mean? What is available on-street parking actually mean outside of the downtown center and outside of the municipal parking district downtown? I mean, most residential streets in Amherst outside of the downtown and not including major corridors allow on-street parking on both sides of the street. So are we saying that that's all potential area where people could be parking? And, you know, for example, last week before the council, the council voted on Kendrick Place and on restricting parking there. And at the time, Councilor Schreiber brought up the question about, well, we have many twenty-one-foot-wide streets in Amherst. Does that mean we're going to restrict parking on many of them? You know, there was a little bit of a discussion then with Councilor Ross, just about, well, it depends on where the demand is, how much parking demand there is, whether we need to then reduce it. But again,
We need you to finish up things.
If that's one of the criteria. So I do, you know, the TSO has developed guidelines for assessing on-street parking requests. I wonder how that will relate to the Special Permit Granting Authority, whether they'll be looking at that as well, and whether the TSO and the council and the Special Permit Granting Authority will work together. But thank you.
Thank you for joining us. We concluded public comment. And because I asked for people to raise their hands in the beginning. We do have one other. I'm going to go ahead and allow it, but this is the last public comment. Claudia Pozzoni, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Claudia Pozzoni, forty-seven Emily Lane, District Two, also Executive Director of the Amherst Area Chamber. I'm going to be the only person to speak for moving forward with the overlay, and I very much take all the comments to heart and certainly, and share the, the comments on the work of these past three years of this incredible group. And I'm so appreciative, and there's a lot to celebrate. And I, I think that, you know, when I think about the overlay and I think about this process with the garage, it is a challenging one, as, as we've all heard, and there are neighborhoods, wherever we turn, whatever parking solution there may be, there is no corner in which we don't hit historic issues or a residential issue in our downtown. It is, it's just that small and that tight. And that is the reality of our, our downtown. And so we are promoting to push forward, to try to see if this is a viable spot. We really encourage the overlay. I, I have been doing a lot of my shopping downtown, and I do feel like we have a lot more going on than we have in a long time. I actually disagree with the last person that was on. I have found incredible guests in our downtown. And so I'm feeling, I'm just feeling so energized and about our revival. And to me, this is an extension of where we have come from and where we still need to go as a town. Every other town is planning their revival. How are they looking at smart streets? How are they looking at, and municipal parking is a big piece of that. And whether it is real or perceived, we know that there is a parking issue. As part of the visitor center, we get the complaints daily of folks who weren't able to find parking, who say, oh, gosh, I got it, you know, I, or people call and say, I'm not coming back, or I looked and turned and couldn't find a spot. So those are the kinds of things, and whether, again, those folks, those of us who know those hidden, those hidden gems of a spot who may have been here for years have that advantage. But at the end of the day, we want someone to come and love our town and stay. Yes, we all pushed for a more green North Common, which is, the French say the best word, accueillant. It's, it's, it's welcoming. That is to get people to stay. But the parking, if you could easily find parking like I do in North Hampton, and some, and many of us have, you get that easy spot, you're in a well-lit, safe space, you could, you're comfortable leaving your car, so you can go and peruse and, and, and spend time. And that's what we want. We want people to come and spend time in our downtown. So I do encourage us to move forward, and we had about, we submitted about fifteen comments on a letter that we had put out. So I do think that we're thoughtful, and there's a lot more to put into this, but this is the start of a long conversation, and we look forward to being part of that, and we do hope you move forward. Thank you for your time, and thank you again for all you've done this year.
Thank you for joining us, Claudia. That concludes public comment. We're going to go on to the consent agenda. I'm sorry, we have no hearing. We've already said that we're done with public comment. We're going on to the consent agenda. The following items were selected because they were considered to be routine, and it was reasonable to expect they would pass with no controversy. To remove an item, please let me know after I conclude the entire consent agenda item, which now appears on the screen. The request to remove an item does not require a second. To move the following items and printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. Suspension of Town Council Rules of Procedure Rule Eight Point Four for the following agenda items. Eight E, Amendment to the Town Council Policy Regarding Control and Regulation of the Public Ways Regarding the Performance Show on the Town Common and Delegation of Authority to the Board of License Commissioners for Lunch Courts. And eight H, two thousand twenty-two Town Council Meeting Schedule. Eight Point Four only means we are allowed to act tonight. Six A, Adoption of the Two Thousand Twenty-One Human Rights Day Proclamation. Eight H, Adoption of the Two Thousand Twenty-Two Town Council Meeting Schedule. Eleven A to C, Approval of the Following Town Council Meeting Minutes, November fifteen, two thousand twenty-one. Special Town Council Meeting Minutes, Financial Indicators. November fifteen, two thousand twenty-one, Town Council Meeting Minutes, Public Forum on the Budget. November fifteen, two thousand twenty-one, Regular Town Council Meeting Minutes. Nine A, One, Approval of Town Manager Appointment to the Residence Advisory Board. Is there, I'm sorry, hold on one second. Yes, Dorothy? Please unmute.
I would like to remove the adoption of the two thousand twenty-two Town Council Meeting Schedule. I think that the new town council should adopt that. If we need to adopt the first meeting in January, then I would say, let's do that. But I really think that the new town council should vote on that schedule.
Dorothy, may I just mention, we adopt it, and then they also adopt it. This is not the final time it will come up. But the attempt is to have a schedule, and then at the first meeting, they can adopt and/or amend it.
I guess I don't like that system, is what I'm saying. I feel it kind of pushes people along and coerces them. I really think that they should have a chance to discuss it. We've been making a bad example of having way too many meetings, and I think that the whole question of meeting should be discussed by the new council.
Okay, we're removing that item. Is there anything else? Alyssa?
I'm sorry, I'm confused. Which thing are we removing with that item? Are we removing Eight Point Four? Are we removing it all together? What's your plan for later?
My plan right now is to only remove eight H, Adoption of the Two Thousand Twenty-Two Town Council Meeting Schedule.
So we don't need to suspend the rule then if we're actually not going to adopt it either? I'm sorry, I'm not trying to belabor this. I just don't understand. I don't agree with removing it, and so I'd like it to remain on in the same way that our, that we always have things remain on, and when we get to the item, we argue about it again. It's just not on.
At this point, I am not removing eight H under suspension of Eight Point Four, so we can still act tonight. But I am removing eight H, Adoption of the Two Thousand Twenty-Two Town Council Meeting Schedule. Okay? Is there any other removals? So I'm looking for a second, and in this case, the second requires the eight H, Adoption of the Two Thousand Twenty-Two Town Council Meeting Schedule not be part of the motion.
Second, Ross.
Thank you. Is there any other question? Okay, then I'm going to move to vote. Shalini Baumel.
No.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Patty Angeles?
Aye.
Darcy Demont? Darcy Demont? This is to improve the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, I, yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an I, Mandy Johanneke?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
That is the agenda with that item removed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
It posts, it passes twelve in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, no absence. We did pass in it the Human Rights Day Proclamation. Mandy Johanneke is the sponsor, and I ask her at this time to read the end of the proclamation.
Yes, thank you. This is a proclamation we do every year for Human Rights Day. This is the two thousand twenty-one proclamation, and we celebrate Human Rights Day on December tenth, two thousand twenty-one. So now therefore, the Amherst Town Council hereby proclaims December tenth, two thousand twenty-one, Human Rights Day. Encourages our community to embrace every opportunity to reflect and embody the values of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights in their work for the community, and urges Amherst residents to celebrate this day with a communal reading of the Declaration of Human Rights on December tenth, two thousand twenty-one, at six PM on the town. on December tenth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. on the Town Common.
Thank you, Mandy Jo, and thank you for sponsoring that. We are going to move on to the budget guidelines. And I'm going to call on Andy Steinberg to call the Finance Committee meeting to order.
Yeah, I'm gonna call the Finance Committee meeting for this evening's, uh, ten, December sixth to order. And it's at seven forty. And I need to then ask that the three resident members of the committee confirm that they're in attendance and that they can hear and be heard. We've already heard from the council members. So Bernie Kubiak?
Present.
Bob Hegner?
I'm here.
Matt Holloway?
Here.
Okay, um, Lynn, I turn it back to you and I've explained that it's a joint meeting and that you're the chair of both meetings.
Okay, um, so the Finance Committee has met. They have discussed the financial guidelines that are in your packet. Uh, and they have made revisions to those. Andy, do you have any preliminary? I'm going to ask you for preliminary comments in a moment, but my plan is the following. We, if there are changes, we will go section by section. And, um, if we see that there are minimal changes or that we can cha- make those changes this evening, we will then move to suspend eight point four and adopt the guidelines tonight. Otherwise, they will go back to the Town Finance Committee meeting tomorrow and come back next week. So Andy, if our preliminary comments about the finance guidelines. Andy, yeah?
Yes, I think now you can hear me and I'll get back onto the camera, having had a problem with my computer there. Thank you. I really don't want to make a, uh, long introductory statement because, uh, we provided both the Finance Committee report, which summarized the key, uh, points from the guidelines draft. And, uh, then the guidelines, I think, are quite extensive and speak for themselves. And, uh, the, um, just the general recognition is that we're in a very difficult year, uh, for number of reasons that are set forward in, uh, both documents that I referenced and, uh, we, uh, to tried not to make policy judgments on behalf of the council, but point out problems, um, that exist and, uh, set forth, uh, the hard choices that need to be made. And I think that that was the theme, whether other members of the committee will add to that as we go along. I think that's fine. And I have heard from one member of the council who, uh, did, uh, state a, uh, request to, uh, be recognized and, uh, to state concerns about one particular aspect of that she, uh, felt needed to be stated more strongly and that was Darcy.
Okay, and we'll get to that when we get to that section. Uh, meantime, I also want to recognize the fact that Sean Mangano, uh, and, um, Sonia Aldridge are in the audience, should we need them. Okay, uh, so, uh, we're going to look at this. We're going to start with the opening, uh, section. Please raise your hand if you have any comments about it. Mandy Jo?
Um, I'm just curious what you mean by opening section?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before we get to section one, or?
First two paragraphs before one. Thank you. Okay, seeing none, then let's go over to, uh, number, uh, Roman numeral one, overall philosophy and concerns for F Y twenty-three. Raise your hand if you have comments. Mandy? Mandy Jo?
A, a couple here. Some are just more, more general, which is the last sentence on the, or the half sentence on the first page is not grammatically correct because they're not all gerunds, implementing, starting, then it's creation of reparations, doesn't even have a thing. You know, so I, I would like that corrected. The continued slow growth in revenues at the very beginning of the second paragraph. I questioned that because the COVID recovery has accelerated the growth in, um, non-property tax revenue. And so I wasn't sure that was actually correct. On the page two, the first paragraph, full paragraph, doing this requires assessing what the operating budget will be with current staffing and benefits. Shouldn't we be evaluating programs to determine the, their necessary staffing needs? Instead of assessing what the operating budget will be with the current staffing? It, it might be just difference of philosophy there. The second full paragraph, last sentence is, we also need to evaluate those services and the need for them. Are we going to say anything about how we're going to evaluate the services? You know, or are we just making a statement that it needs done, but we're not going to say when or how or things like that? The second to last paragraph that starts with fire and EMS staff concerns have been raised for several years. I would like to see, since we've gotten confirmation, that the ARPA funding for four additional positions, um, will become full positions, um, into the operating budget that we could somehow put that into these financial guidelines by a specific year so that we don't in future years lose track of that. And, and then, um, um, I think that's it for now on those.
Darcy?
Yeah, um, I am, um, I recommend we, we add language to underline our commitment to implementing the climate action out adaptation resilience plan and achieving our two thousand twenty-five goal of twenty-five percent emission reduction. There was a quite a bit more language about it in the last budget guidance last year. And I, um, there was language about how we're, we have hard decisions to make, et cetera, et cetera. In this one, and it mentioned climate action, but it didn't say much specific about the climate action plan. So I'd like to add that and note that, um, ECAC is currently poised to send the council its annual report and funding request. Um, and in it, there is a listing of the twenty-five actions in the CARP that were counted into the twenty-five percent emissions reductions calculation. A listing how ready they are for implementation, the amount of greenhouse gas reduction, their relative costs, et cetera, et cetera. And again, uh, as I mentioned before, ECAC is working with the Finance Director and Stephanie Chikarilla to help determine what comes next. But, um, the council supported the F Y twenty-two budget allocating a hundred thousand in capital for sustainability, uh, in particular, to secure grants and I would recommend that we consider doubling that for F Y twenty-three because we're going to be having many more state and federal grant opportunities and we need to be ready for those, um, for our, to be able to contribute our portion, et cetera. And I have a motion ready, but I am also happy to, if people are willing to just send it back to the Finance Committee to, um, to add, to make that section stronger, add a parag- I was suggesting adding paragraph after paragraph three on page two, just put a paragraph in there about climate action. And I have the language if we want to make the motion now or it's fine.
Darcy, given the, uh, changes that Mandy Jo has questioned and this, I'm going to suggest that we're not going to try to pass this tonight and we will just continue to proceed to add comments, which Finance Committee Chair and other members may be noting. And you make sure you send them to them because we are meeting tomorrow. Are there any other comments with regard to section one?
I just have one more thing and that is if normally, you know, our second reading would come in two weeks after the first reading and I, I know that ECAC is going to weigh in on this, uh, to try to get, uh, something out to the council. And if we could possibly have the second reading on the twenty-second, um, instead of the fifteenth, that would help a lot.
I will take that under consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. Mandy Jo, are there other comments on section one?
Uh, yeah, I apologize. I missed one when I was going through. On the top of page two, the, the par- the sentence that's actually continued, that had that beginning to address the problems in four inadequate buildings. That paragraph doesn't actually really indicate what those four buildings are at all. So I found that, I mean, I, I know in general what those are, right? I think many of us do, but, but there's no indication in this document, in that paragraph, which four buildings those are referring to. And so for clarity purposes, we just might want to change that language.
Are there any other comments on section one? Are there comments on section two, Roman numeral two, Revenue Projections? George?
Thank you, Lynn. In paragraph three, the, uh, it reads that because of good planning and fiscal discipline, there's nev- there's been no need to ask voters to consider proposition two and a half operating budget override since two thousand and ten. I guess my question is, it's a question really, not a comment. Is whether there was any discussion or whether that's something that should be considered? When one looks at this set of guidelines just above in paragraph one and the issue of, um, you know, normally when we do increases and we set guidelines, we keep them the same for all departments. This time, that's not going to be the case. And the report makes clear that we do face rather difficult set of choices. I just, the question is, was this even mentioned or discussed? And if it wasn't, why wasn't it?
Let me collect the next comment and, uh, then I'll go back to Andy if he would like to comment. Mandy Jo?
Yep, um, just for this time, the first and two of them are really simple. The first sentence is the council adopts the revenue projections. I would accept, I think, is more likely. We're not really, I, I didn't think we were adopting them. In the fourth paragraph, we, the last second to last sentence, we encourage further development in our downtown in order to increase our revenues. I'd like to add the phrase and village centers because it's not just the downtown we're looking to encourage development in. We're looking to, expand our village center development for better, um, retail. The next paragraph that talks about property taxes increase annually and are not distributed evenly. I found it missing that we're not even talking about strategic partnership agreements there at all. You know, in terms of belongs to tax exempt institutions and all, so I, I, I am disappointed that I know it shows up in other parts of this document, but that that paragraph is missing the need for strategic partnership agreements with our institutions of higher learning. And then the last paragraph on this page, um, on page three, the council supports continuation of the policy that reserve funds should not be used to support recurring expenses which require recurring revenue sources. Um, one of the things we're actually, what it, what is missing, I thought, from this paragraph was the use of reserve funds for transitioning to new programs. I thought it was something that we were considering, especially for potential programs, um, like the CREST or not. Hopefully, we won't have to use the reserve funds to transition, but it's certainly something I thought we were considering and that part of that use of reserve funds was missing from this paragraph.
Are there any other comments on section two, Revenue Projections? Andy, please come respond.
Uh, as a general comment first, um, a lot of what has been mentioned, uh, and I think it's actually been noted by speakers is, uh, that, it's been included later in the document and what we were trying to do, because we were recognizing that the document was getting quite lengthy, was when we were, when it was getting into its final editing phase, there was a real effort to not repeat thoughts a whole lot in documents so that, um, in an earlier draft, if you look at earlier drafts, there was, um, the example of, uh, mentioning the listing of the buildings, the four buildings multiple times and the feeling in that we're trying to do to shorten it is to eliminate that kind of repetition. So if there's a disagreement about that as a drafting technique and the, um, trying to, uh, keep it short was not, um, a correct goal because lost clarity, then, uh, we'll have to make that change back. And, uh, as far as, uh, you know, the, and that applies also to the reserve fund because we cover the reserve principle on several different occasions. I think that we recognize that the startup of new programs, uh, is, uh, um, on a one-time basis, which is why we use the terminology that we use of continuing, that you don't want to do something unless you think there's another plan that's going to keep you going into the future, uh, without making at least a conscientious and conscious choice about, uh, what the, um, recognizing the long-term consequence because at some point you're gonna have to figure out what you're gonna cut to pay for it. You may not do it in the first year, but you're gonna have to do it and, uh, that it's not something that ought to be done without giving some, uh, consideration. And I think that was probably the, uh, uh, driving element to the committee on that subject. And, uh, I think that we were, um, probably implying in trying to encourage against, um, any kind of operating budget override for all of the reasons stated, but we probably omitted just the bottom line one sentence that says we're not recommending it. So, uh, that's actually a good observation appreciated. And I don't know if other members of the committee have other comments that they want to make at this time or really just go on.
Are there any other comments? Kathy?
Uh, yeah, just, um, so I, I can get, um, clarification from Mandy on the strategic partnerships. Andy, we, as you noted later on, we talk about increasing the amount of money we get from them. Do you, are you asking that we add something here to say we should execute them because we don't actually have them with all the institutions and increase? Would you, you, because, um, in that same paragraph that talks about the tax exemption, are you asking for also a stronger statement, not just a recognition these exist? Because we do that toward the end and we could also insert something here and then refer to the end of the document?
Um, to insert something here and refer to the end of the document, at the end of the document, when it is mentioned, I'd like a stronger statement too.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments with regard to section two, Revenue Projections? Then we're going on to go, we're going to go to three expenditures. Comments, please? Seeing none, we're going to go to four expenses for operation. Mandy Johannicky?
In the third paragraph where we're talking about the schools, um, gosh, it's the second full sentence, I think, um, health and that starts with health insurance costs scheduled to increase. There's a regional schools will be- There's a regional schools will be difficult to meet. You know, the 2 and 1/2 increase for, for increase for regional schools will be difficult to meet without identifying efficiencies or being supplemented by ARPA. I felt we should talk about adjusting for declines in enrollment in that sentence as another. You know, it says without identifying efficiencies or adjusting for declines in enrollments. Something about acknowledging that there are declines in enrollments in our schools that will allow us to potentially decrease costs in certain areas or rein in increases in costs, I guess might be a better way of putting it, in certain areas.
Okay, is there anything else for expenses for Operation? Mandy Jo, you still, okay. Alyssa?
Sorry, I was hitting all the wrong buttons. Thank you for your patience. Yeah, along those lines, one of the things that I, I I want to make sure I made clear as a former school committee member is that, yes, there is a decline in enrollment. And frequently, that decline in enrollment does not equal any actual cost savings because of the way the decline in enrollment is spread across grades, spread across programs, et cetera. But it should, I agree, be mentioned, so it should be referenced. And then the idea should be that eventually, as the budget is better described throughout the process, yes, we acknowledge there's been a decline in enrollment, as we clearly just saw again in the school committee's presentation tonight at the high school. But that doesn't translate to, oh, that means we no longer need to offer XYZ programs. I think that's really important to mention it and to address it, even if Mandy Jo and I might disagree as to whether or not it can actually result in savings. It should definitely be addressed. Along those lines of just clarifying, it says here that the schools receive $160,000 from the University of Massachusetts. So that is not, we don't have a current agreement, period, strategic partnership agreement. It's way expired. Whatever's being honored is wonderful for both sides of the partnership. When it says $160,000, starting when, ending when, this is a separate negotiation between the schools and UMass, this is part of our strategic partnership agreement, it's just kind of randomly thrown in there. And it's not clear if that was last year's amount and this year's amount and the next year's amount, et cetera. So that just needs to be clarified. If you'd rather just do that by referencing some other document, I think that's fine. But I think that as a standalone, just as we were talking about the four buildings or the four capital projects, it doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense to people who aren't on the inside of the situation.
Okay, are there any other comments on this section? Then I'm going to move to 5 Expenses for Capital. Alyssa, you still have your hand up?
That's my mistake.
Shalini?
I was going to speak about the previous.
Fine, sorry, then please do.
Yeah, and I'm not clear about where this discussion happened, so I'm just going to say what's on my mind about education, because we heard a lot of discussions last year about budgeting and budget cuts. And I just feel that in the process of gathering information, there was a lot of information about where, as a town, we spend money with respect to our schools and where the money goes. For example, we value our teachers and we pay higher than district, other districts maybe, or we value inclusive education, inclusion, creating inclusive environment, so we pay more for special. And we, we heard today that 45% students are special needs. And so I wonder if highlighting those additional, that's where our expenses go, would also be more information for people to know. Yes.
Thank you. Mandy Jo, this section, moving on.
Moving on. So if there's other people in Section 4, hold off on me.
Are there other comments in Section 4? Then moving on to Expenses for Capital, Mandy Jo?
Thank you, and thank you for your patience. Paragraph 1, "For Major Investments By Renovation And Repair Or Replacement Of," and then it lists four projects. And so I'm curious what the quote renovation and repair or replacement of phrase modifies. Does it modify just the Fort River and Wildwood schools, or does it modify all four buildings or five buildings that are listed there? Because it's, if, if it's read as modifying all five of those things listed, including central fire EMS station and public works facility, I think we should be clearer that those are being replaced and that it is an expansion project now with the Jones Library, given that we've voted that. The second paragraph, second to last sentence, "The DPW and Fire EMS Station Projects Will Proceed When An Appropriate Site Is Found For A DPW Building." That is potentially in direct conflict to the policy goals that are in front of us that we will get to later this week, later this night, for the town manager. And so I would ask that whatever we decide on the policy goals for the town manager regarding the four capital investments, that that sentence be made to comply or be consistent with those policy goals. And then on Page 7, the first full paragraph that begins, "Amherst Does Not Have A Functional Ladder Truck." The second, third sentence is, "We urge you to consider whether this is a need that affects safety and whether we need a plan to fund its purchase." I think we need a plan to fund its purchase, not consider whether we need a plan to fund its purchase. So I'd like that reworded, and possibly with a goal of when we will put that purchase into our capital improvement plan and start funding that purchase.
Are there any other comments on 5? Shalini, you have your hand up?
Okay, I'll just go ahead anyways. I didn't have, but I was just thinking about the maintenance, like when we're considering capital projects, whether we should also include what would be the cost of maintenance.
Okay. Are there any other comments on 5 Expenses for Capital? Please lower all hands. We'll start with 6 Other Budget Needs. Kathy?
You're muted.
Thank you, Athena. Darcy, at the very beginning on ECAC, talked about doubling the sustainability budget. That is in capital. Is the suggest, was the suggestion to put that sentence in this section? It's, it's a question, since I'm on the committee looking at these tomorrow. Because that is, that is where that fund sits. It sits in the capital side of our budget.
Darcy, please respond.
Sorry. Yes, the answer to that is yes. So it should appear, it probably should, the language about it should appear in a couple places in the, in the budget guidance.
Okay, thank you. Alyssa, you have your hand up?
I'm sorry, I want to make sure we didn't, I didn't lose track of where we are. Are we in 6 Other Budget Needs?
We are 6, yes.
Yes, where there's just basically one small paragraph. I don't appreciate the way it's phrased to say this is a major obligation and failure to address that affects the bond rating. We don't have any failure to address it. We don't have any recent failure to address it. Please find a way to rephrase that. That makes it clear that we failed at some point, and we have not.
Okay, are there any other comments on 5, on 6? We are moving on to 7 Budget Process. Are there any comments? We're moving on to 8 Planning For The Future Years. Mandy Jo?
Yeah, for, for Kathy and the Finance Committee, this is the section that I thought on Paragraph 2, we needed to be stronger about the strategic partnership agreements. Right here, it's just continue to work with the three on strategic partnership agreements. Expected to sign, sign, negotiate, something that's a little stronger, I think. Midway through that paragraph, the, the paragraph talks about the university supporting the cost to educate children. It's critical that support continue, and then it talks about UMass invested in the health of our community. And then it goes immediately to nonprofit partners. I don't know whether it's appropriate, but should we be adding sentences in there or talk in there about that we expect the university to contribute to other costs that the town incurs? Fire, EMS, roads, sidewalks, that aren't necessarily being paid for right now. And in the fourth paragraph that starts, "There are other means to generate new revenue. The town should regularly evaluate service fees to assure they are in line with costs, including fees for rental permits." This was an FY22 manager goal. I wonder if we want to state this one a little bit more forcefully than should regularly evaluate. But that's, that's just a thought of mine. Thanks.
Dorothy?
Are we leaving Amherst College in Hampshire out of this discussion completely? Shouldn't they be mentioned? Particularly since Amherst College at one time did offer us a possibility of some land for a project. I would hope that we would continue to have some kind of negotiated arrangement with Amherst College. And certainly, I do remember that Hampshire College offered emergency housing in case it was needed for COVID. So I just think they should maybe add it to this paragraph, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Alyssa?
Yeah, I agree, obviously, with everything that Mandy Jo said. Maybe I should put a period on that. Almost everything Mandy Jo said, probably everything Mandy Jo said, but certainly associated with strategic partnership agreements and specifically mentioning Amherst College and Hampshire College. It seems odd to not include their names in here. One of the sentences that really clanged for me is where it says at the end of, so we're in 8, and the first paragraph is short and the second paragraph is really long. And it ends with, "Our partners need to avoid actions that compete with the businesses." That, one, doesn't really make sense in terms of what businesses are we talking about. And, two, they are directly competing with businesses right now as they're building the new facilities that they're building. So that's actually, in my opinion, okay. But if we're going to state this, then they've already not doing what we're asking them to do. So I would, one, drop that sentence altogether because I don't think it makes any sense. And secondly, if there's something you're trying to communicate with that about the ongoing need to continue to discuss, what needs do they meet on campus? What needs do we meet off campus? So we all have this wonderful partnership. I think that's great, but that sentence, that, that's, that's bad. Take it out.
Kathy?
I think, Alyssa, and again, I'm just going to ask you to say a bit more, and I'll give you a context. One of the things that has come up over the course of the last year, and I don't know whether it was an isolated incident, was the UMass terrific food service and catering starting to deliver to private homes off-campus. And that eats into the local businesses, and they were, it's a different thing than selling food on-campus. And actually, some UCLA, and there have been a few campuses, when it becomes a profit-making center and it's not central to the education mission of the place, they become, they actually could be taxed on that. So, so do you want to, is it delete the sentence or say more about what we're talking about, is, is my question?
Alyssa?
Both, delete the sentence and say more about what you're talking about. And that example, for example, would be a great example, right? Because that's something a lot of people have heard about, but what people do think about is the long-term relationships that the black sheep has said they used to be able to deliver more on-campus, and then they were told they were not allowed to deliver anymore on-campus. And the, you know, whether the university is not just building housing, they're replacing the Lincoln Apartments. They're building businesses, too, which, again, I don't have a problem with. But if we're going to state flat out that they shouldn't be competing with businesses, it clangs because it doesn't make sense in comparison to what we're actually talking about. Your example is, is something that people should continue to discuss, and I appreciate that.
Shalini, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was thinking that the ways we improve our budget is by increasing revenue, decreasing costs. And a third ways of improving efficiencies, and one way we can do that is through municipal audits. And if that's something we want to consider, especially with departments. And this, again, not a criticism of particular departments, but as a way of supporting them and increasing their efficiency, because we all have blind spots. So that's something, there's something called municipal audits for departments where that could be, that's something that we should be considering and included. And the other thing that's already been mentioned, I think, is the, how do we increase the revenue sources from certain things that have, you know, like parking, for example, the special permits, $25 for residents downtown? Is that something that we could be charging more, or permits from commercial buildings, I mean, rental buildings versus a single home? Should we be charging a little more for that? So these are, you know, looking at those areas of how to enhance our revenue.
Shalini, I just want to qualify that when you say departmental audits, you don't mean financial. You mean organizational audits?
Yes, operational audits.
Operational, thank you. Any other, Dorothy?
Okay, well, I have two points that I'd like to make, actually in defense of UMass. Number one, their food service, besides being nationally renowned, they have made an increasing attempt over the last several years to buy local food. And I don't have the figures on that, but I don't think my daughter actually sells to them. But I know that buying local food is something that's very important for the growing of our agricultural strength and self-sufficiency. So I think that they do, they do provide food, and they are doing a two-way street on that. Some of the new businesses that they are proposing to include on the Mass Ave side of the new Mass Ave dorm are those to kind of keep students more campus-centered and to perhaps, at least as was presented to us by people from UMass, to kind of reduce the trekking of students through the residential neighborhoods to downtown. They were trying to redirect the traffic along Mass Ave, and I thought that was a sensitive response to living with a neighborhood. So I, I think that, that we, I would just say, leave that sentence out completely. That's my suggestion.
Okay, Alyssa?
Yeah, I guess I'm just going to caution us to be careful in how we word that then, because it's one thing to say that sounds responsive to that particular neighborhood's concerns. It's another thing to consider revenue lost because people are not going downtown because they're staying on campus and taxes are not being paid by those facilities. So everything is more complex than it first appears. And so the constant push-pull between the people who would like there to be a fence all the way around UMass, where parents drop to their kids off, and then no one ever saw them again until they left in four years, versus the people who want them to be fully integrated in the community, gets really complicated when your house is on the way to the rest of the business community. So I appreciate that, but I just want us to be real careful with how we word that. And that's why that sentence has to go the way it is, but that's why some of these variations will be important to express what we're actually trying to get across.
Andy, would you like to respond?
Just a couple things. I really appreciate all of the comments saying, you know, we will do our best to do, to revise it in the campus as much as we can. I do want to invite other members of the committee, if they have questions for clarification or comments, to feel free to raise their hands, but that's a choice of individual members of the committee. One thing that I wanted to touch on directly is Mandy made a comment about the fire truck and wanting to make a stronger statement. And I said at the beginning of my comments before we presented that the committee had been careful to try and not impinge on the council's role for actually setting the priorities, but to kind of tee it up, so to speak. And the, the fire truck is actually going to be a significant decision because a ladder truck is, costs well over $1 million. It is not going to be funded out of one year's worth of capital. It is going to have, it's going to be one of those purchases that's going to involve a fairly substantial borrowing. That's going to involve a fairly substantial borrowing. Authorization of a bond by a future council and pay back over. A significant period of time because you can't handle that kind of repurchase. And if the council is saying to the town manager, come back with a proposal to do that, I think of. It is an important policy statement of the council to make that because you're not talking. About buying a Prius car. You're talking about buying a really substantial. Maybe the most substantial moving vehicle that the town could possibly make a purchase on. And the last is just a simpler request, probably directed. Mostly of Andy and a little bit of Alyssa, but I really would appreciate if you could, if you have notes. And you could forward them then before tomorrow after noon's meeting at two o'clock. That would be greatly appreciated because then we can make sure that we have your points exactly as you want them considered. So if you. Were reading from prepared notes and can do that, appreciate that.
Thank you, Andy. We have one more section. It's the conclusion section. Are there any comments there? Then I'm going to say to all, I'm sorry, Dorothy.
Yeah, this is a question. The, the new dorm, isn't that a public-private partnership?
It is.
So doesn't that mean that there will be some taxes paid on that, on that dorm? Or what does it mean? I see some shaking of heads, so.
Paul or one of the finance people, can you clarify that?
It doesn't necessarily mean it, Dorothy. So this is, this is where you get in the hazy area of. Is it, is it, the land is publicly owned, the building is run by, and. There are instances. Where the communities have gone after for taxes, but to my knowledge, we don't, haven't done that here.
I'm sorry, Paul, is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, so I, I think Kathy got it right. So the land, the way I understand it, the land is going to be continued to own by the university with a ground lease given to the. Pro, to the developer. There are private. Businesses on the college campus that operate as businesses. And that's where we're attempting to get taxes from them appropriately. But. The university tends to push back on that and so it becomes more of a challenge for us.
Thank you. Are there any other comments at all on the financial guidelines? Alyssa.
So it's my last chance to say it since obviously I didn't run for reelection. This is a huge document that obviously a lot of people put a ton of work into. And I'm going to say that I really, really hope, and I'm sorry, I haven't read the finance committee's transition document for the new town council, so this may be covered. Is I really hope that well before this is due next year, everyone rethinks the role of this document. I find this document incredibly dense. I think it's going to, it's not a good reference document. It's a good once and done kind of document. And that's okay, but it's really long for being a once and done document. It's a, when I obviously have no choice but to compare it to my previous elected life before town council existed. And then we got finance committee guidelines, which obviously many, at least one of the same people has worked on for many years. They were shorter and they were advice to the town manager and town meeting. Now, they were appointed by the town moderator. Now we're in this weird position where finance committee members are largely town council members. They're reporting back to town council, but they're writing this huge document on our behalf, which we're then trying to edit on the spot because that's the way open meeting law works. And. It just doesn't work the same way in terms of, I'm reflecting back to what Andy said about the. Performance goals for the town manager is it's even harder to draw the line than it was. Back when we had a finance committee appointed by the town moderator who wrote. Guidelines based on those financial parameters, which like Mandy Jo said, we don't adopt, we just accept that those were the indicators. In fact, we don't even accept it. We just say, we know the professionals know what they're doing. Of course, those are the indicators. That's what the finance committee used to do. The select board would come up with performance goals for the town manager and we always struggled with what's the difference between our performance goals? And the budget policy guidelines. So there were three documents before. So now we're down to two. But it's still not clear to me where those lines are. And so one of the things that maybe the next council can work on is thinking about. Is that the appropriate place to say, we, the finance committee, say, you need more money. From the three higher ed institutions. We need more money from fees. And then the how do you get that is the part that ends up in the performance evaluation. So instead of the finance committee having to say as they're having to this year, it would be a real good idea if you did some of these things. And how that strays into the performance guidelines and performance evaluation is to focus more on, we need more money. And this is where it should come from and then leave the rest to the performance guidelines. Because I would like this to be a document that we could find more useful on an ongoing basis than I think we're able to right now. And I know it was a ton of work.
Are there any other final comments with regard to this document? Then I would like to ask people who've made comments today. I want to reiterate. Andy's request that you send those comments to him and to him alone. Prior to the meeting tomorrow, which is at two o'clock. And with that, I'm going to ask that we take a break. We will reconvene at eight. Forty.
Would you like Andy to adjourn the finance committee meeting?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Andy, would you please adjourn the finance committee meeting?
Yes, I adjourned the finance committee meeting and. Just as for the record for everybody who hasn't figured it out, we are convening again tomorrow in a separately posted meeting at two o'clock.
Great. Thank you all for your comments. I'm sorry.
Did you say eight forty? I'm just.
I did. I said eight forty, okay? Thank you. Please unmute and. And close off your picture. When you come back, please put it back on. Okay. I don't know about the rest of you, but we're having pretty heavy rain at this point. Shalani, we know you're not, but that's okay. All right, we're reconvening. I am seeing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen counselors. So. We are going to move on to the. Performance shell. And I just want to remind counselors that we have already had a complete. Presentation on this to the council. In addition to that, TSO has had a additional serious, long conversation about this. And they have received reports from various other committees. In our audience tonight, in addition to Gabrielle Gould being with us, our actual. Audience includes the two designers as well as John Kuhn. And so if we need to bring them in, we will, but the reality is we do not have a. Presentation on this item tonight. We are going to move rapidly to Evan talking about TSO. And. The review that you've done there and then to counselor questions and a vote. Evan?
Thank you, Lynn. I'll be brief because I assume counselors have had an opportunity to read the TSO report. But TSO reviewed this at our last meeting following. Final review by three different town committees, the design review board, the historical commission. And the disability access advisory committee, all three of which sent to TSO. Unanimous positive recommendations for the performance shell. TSO went through those, talked about some of the additional recommendations that were in those reports. And voted unanimously with one absent to recommend the town council approve the public ways request from the downtown Amherst foundation. For the performance shell, essentially with two conditions. My screen, one being final approval of the final schematic architectural plans by the town manager. Which essentially ensures that as work moves forwards, if site conditions change and sidewalks need to be adjusted slightly. Those, those are approved by the town manager in consultation with staff. And also, and this one was very important. That approval is contingent on entrance into a memorandum of understanding or contract with the town to establish a management and maintenance fund and plan. Which has been under discussion by both the finance committee and between the town manager and the finance director. So I'm happy to answer questions, but it did receive a unanimous recommendation from TSO with one absent.
I'd like to go ahead and place a motion on the table, look for a second and see if there's any questions. The motion is to approve the public ways request for the downtown Amherst foundation. For the construction of a performance shell and associated site improvements on the town common in Prince South Common. As presented to the town council on nine twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one and updated at TSO. On twelve dash two dash twenty twenty-one with the following conditions, approval of schematic. Architectural plans by the town manager in consultation with town staff to consider ADA accessibility impact on shade trees. Pedestrian access and all legal and procurement requirements and bullet two. Entrance into a memorandum of understanding or contract with the town to establish a man and manage. A management and maintenance fund and plan. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments at this time? Kathy?
It's, it's a comment rather than a question. We, the finance committee a while ago, not a while ago, I guess everything feels like a while ago, but a few weeks ago. Had a discussion about the maintenance fund and I, I'm just wondering Lynn whether. Some of the issues that I think this motion covers it, but we talked about particular kinds of things that were, should be. In that agreement, including liability. So we had a discussion about that of, you know, someone should fall. So. Is the way this is worded, all of that is folded in. To that motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Sure, Shalani.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the disability advisory. Access advisory committee and it's good to see that they gave a unanimous vote of support for this. And then just. That their recommendations, at what point will those be considered?
Evan?
So I, I can start and then hand it over perhaps to Gabrielle Gould on behalf of the deaf. So most of the recommendations. That came from the disability access advisory committee didn't have to do with the performance shell itself, but with the pathways and sidewalks. And as was noted in the report and part of the discussion at TSO, the sidewalk and pathways will be the responsibility of the town. And so those will be finalized as the town moves forward to do those. And so. The, there was one recommendation from the DAC that the downtown Amherst foundation. Have already made changes to their site design plans in response to it. The other one that had to do with performance shell had to do. And Gabrielle will correct me when I say this incorrect, but with the. Color or tactile material at the front of the stage, which we asked during TSO and Gabrielle said that would be included. But the rest would be in the responsibility of the town as it, as it. Does the sidewalks and the. The pathways. I don't know if Gabrielle has more to add to that.
I, I actually don't see Gabrielle. Oh, there she is. Yes, Gabrielle, would you like to say?
I think Evan said it perfectly. The two recommendations that were directly in relation to the shell itself. Have been noted and amended and taken care of. And the others are regardless of the shell, the accessibility of a sidewalk along the boltwood side of the south common.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to a vote. I'm going to start with Alyssa Brewer.
I.
Patty Angeles.
I.
Darcy Demont.
I'm sorry, yes.
Lynn Griesmerz and I, Mandy Johannicky.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
I.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
I.
Andy Steinberg.
I.
Sarah Schwartz.
I.
Shalani Balneum.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. Thank you very much, Gabrielle. We look forward to this and to the terrific design of both. Rayman and Naomi Darling. Thank you. Marina Boo. We're going to move on to our zoning bylaws. There are four tonight. Chris Brestrup, Rob Mora, Nate Malloy and Maureen Pollak have joined us. There are no presentations tonight. This is all about what questions we have and. If there's any other additional comments that need to be made. Okay, the first one is amendment to article fourteen. Temporary zoning regarding permitting the certain use during the COVID nineteen emergency and its aftermath. And since this is merely an extension, extension of date. I'm going to make the motion and look for a second to amend zoning by, bylaw article fourteen temporary zoning as follows. In the first paragraph, delete the year two thousand twenty-one and replace with the year two thousand twenty-two. Is there a second?
Hannah second.
Okay, Hannah is seconded. Is there any further question or discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to begin with Patty Angeles.
I.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmerz and I, Mandy Johannicky.
I.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
I.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
I.
Andy Steinberg.
I.
Sarah Schwartz.
I.
Shalani Balneum.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
I.
It's unanimous. The second is the article that we took up at about eleven o'clock last, last week. It is the amendment to article seven, parking and access regulations. And I'm going to ask first if there are questions. Kathy.
Yeah, I have a, a series of questions. And I guess the simplest way is I'll list them as I go through. Because I must say on this one, I had difficulty understanding parts of it. And then Maureen gave us some very nice. Resources. I tried to go out and find some towns with examples and I found different kinds of examples than what we have in ours. So. It's starting with, it's not clear to me what problem we're trying to solve with these changes. I, what I see with the waiver we now have is that we've seemed to be, have been able to be flexible when we need to be. So it's, why is that not sufficient? And there, I think there's a inclusion in the background report that we have excess parking services somewhere in Amherst. So I don't know whether we have examples. The second is, do we have examples of other towns with the same or similar wording? Because even when I looked at the mass. Massachusetts sample bylaw, it's not really the same kind of criteria we have. The third is, I understand that one of the attempts here was with ADUs to allow flexibility around ADUs. To reduce the standard to less than two. Could, could we not do that just by calling out ADUs and doing an adjustment? So I wasn't sure why we couldn't. Then in section seven, some of the criteria. I don't understand. So why? Would we take as a criteria availability of on-street parking, public parking or public parking lots? I think. That's really dangerous and it would be, I can understand. Private parking lots that they're nearby, you could do shared services, and this is one where I'm not finding it in other bylaws. And so I think, given how crowded our roads have been and that the central purpose of this. Section is to get cars off the street rather than on the street. I don't understand why we would do that. Then the only other one that's more significant is when we get to the waiver. The waiver part got redone, so it no longer has a waiver as I read it on the dwellings. It used to do all of seven point zero zero. And it's missing the seven point zero zero five. There's a whole long list. Under seven point zero and and five has got veterinaries. And some other groups. So what I like about the waiver is it allows the planning board to be flexible. And so I don't know why we would have restricted it. So it's it's got fewer pieces. Applying for waivers. I think I'll stop with those. And I sent these in advance to Chris and her staff, so I wouldn't blindside them. The only other thing is during the discussions, there was discussion about payment lieu of parking and some other innovation. And they're not here. So I don't know whether that's because you considered them and didn't like them. Or that's in version two of this, that this was a beginning. So it feels like it's not quite complete. That it's more drafty than the others. That's it.
Chris?
So I would like to start off with the last question that. That Kathy asked and then turn it over to Maureen for the other questions. I think the last question that Kathy asked had to do with. Why did we not include veterinary establishments, day nurseries, farm stands, et cetera, in this? In this change, and that is seven, section seven point zero zero five of the zoning by law. And the reason is that that already has the word adequate parking spaces. So it lists a bunch of different types of uses that aren't easily categorized under other sections. And then it says that adequate parking spaces would be required to accommodate under normal conditions. The cars of occupants, employees, members, customers, clients and visitors. So. The implication is that it already allows the zoning board and the planning board to determine. What is adequate parking and doesn't make a particular, doesn't specify what their parking requirement is. So that's what I wanted to lead with. And then I think Maureen can try to tackle the other questions. We talked about this. Thank you, Kathy, for submitting these in advance. And we did talk about them. The planning department staff talked about them with Rob Mora today. So I'd like to give Maureen an opportunity to answer the other questions and Rob and I are here to chime in if need be.
Maureen?
Yes, thank you, everyone. So I guess let's start with Kathy's first question, which is what is the problem? What problem is the proposed changes trying to solve? Why is the current waiver provision not sufficient? So there's numerous issues with the existing parking requirements. I'll quickly run through them, you know, so the existing parking space requirements rely on conventional parking standards. Which are generic standards. Imposed by national parking publications and they don't account for. Site-specific neighborhood specific or town wide scales. And so, you know, providing flexible parking standards to enhance conventional parking standards. Is really beneficial as it's unique to the use and the surrounding environment. The existing criteria listed under seven point nine one for waiver modification requests. Is not complete because it focuses on properties that have multiple land uses. On a single law and not a single land, not a single land use such as an apartment building, single-family home or duplex. So what I'm saying is if there's seven seven point nine one is is really geared towards a single property that has multiple uses on it. Not for a single use, an apartment building, a duplex and a single-family home. Parking space modification requests for land uses that are allowed by right can be done. Only be done by special permit. So a by right use, for example, is a single-family home or accessory dwelling unit. And so if that homeowner would wishes to provide just one parking space. Instead of they require two parking spaces, they would actually need to go through the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. Review and approve a process in order to be allowed to have only one parking space. The parking space requirement by use are listed at the beginning of article seven, section seven point zero zero. The section for modification requests is listed separately at the end of article seven, which has been missed by potential applicants. The waiver modification requests are often seen as deterrents for an applicant. And are unpredictable like a variance variance request for potential applicants. Moving on to the next question, are there any examples of other towns with the same or similar wording? If yes, how has this worked in practice? So as part of the planning department's research on flexible parking standards, which is the framework used as the basis for the current zoning amendment. The planning department has identified numerous local and national zoning ordinances ordinances that have used that use similar language. And are cited in web publications that have been shared with the planning board. And the community resource committee on in as part of our slideshows. So the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Planning Commission, which is our regional planning agency. Has produced a. A publication on understanding parking bylaws where it's encouraging flexible parking standards. And there, they actually list communities that have similar language that we are proposing here today. The Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which is the regional planning agency for the Boston and Metro West area. Has a very detailed and wonderful website devoted to flexible parking requirements. And they provide examples that use similar language that we're proposing here today. Both locally here in Massachusetts and across the nation. Let's see here, the next question, let's see here. Sorry. What was your next question? Let's see here. Sorry, give me a second. And I guess the last question I see is. What happened to the discussion about including provisions for payment in lieu of parking? Either flat fee such as Northampton or site-specific as in Braintree. So the planning department provided both the planning board and the community relations committee, the CRC. Other flexible parking standard tool standard tools to explore in the future, including fee in lieu of parking spaces. Which is all alternative for acquiring onsite parking facilities and in the the money that that would be. In lieu of providing that parking space, there would be a fee that would go to the town and that would be dedicated to providing and maintaining. You know, public parking lots and garages and and the like. Other areas that we've listed as as tools to explore in the future. Include exploring the or reevaluating the municipal parking district. Reevaluating the parking permit system and taking a closer look at off-street parking space requirements for non-residential uses. So I think I think that answered Kathy's questions.
I also want to recognize that planning board chair Doug Marshall is with us. And Doug, we'd ask you to raise your hand if you have anything to add at any point in the discussion. Chris, I'm going to go back to you before calling on Dorothy.
I wanted to add something. I think Maureen answered the question that Kathy had about ADUs and why we have a concern there. But I just wanted to emphasize the fact that we've now changed the rules with regard to ADUs to allow the building commissioner to approve. Most ADUs except some detached ones that are larger than fifty percent of the original building. The primary dwelling. So we wanted to give the building commissioner an opportunity to also be able to. Have a say in a waiver or a modification of a parking requirement to decide what would be adequate for a particular ADU. And the other thing is I wanted to talk a little about off-street parking. And off-street parking and on-street parking. And I know there are concerns on the part of town council and also on the part of the TAC. And potentially on the part of T S O about using on-street parking. I wanted to give an example of where that might be appropriate. And this is not a residential example, but it is an example that might be construed to apply to the residential examples. So in places like Lincoln Ave, where we know there's an existing parking problem, on-street parking problem. We would advise the planning board and the zoning board of appeals not to consider. Off-street or excuse me, on-street parking in that location because we know that there's a problem there. However, there was an example of Amherst Media not being able to provide the number of parking spaces that it was required to by zoning. And obviously, this is not a residential. Use, but in that case, Amherst Media said, well, if there was an overflow, we could use on-street parking on Gray Street. And they gave very good. Research that they had done about when Gray Street is used for on-street parking. And it had to do with when school was in session or in businesses in that village center, that little BN zoning district were operational. And they made it clear to the planning board that their use of on-street parking would be during different hours of the day. Than either the school or the businesses that were in that village. So the planning board agreed that if there were a need for overs for overflow parking, that it could be dealt with via on-street location. Because the gray street parking is not used at the same time as Amherst Media. Now, I think if we were to find more cases of this where applicants. Proposed to use on-street parking, we would certainly need to keep track of it very closely. Because we wouldn't want multiple applicants to be claiming the same on-street parking spaces. But that's the kind of thing that there's a lot of communication that goes on in our department with the building commissioner's office and the planning department about these things. So I think. We we talk about this kind of thing a lot and we would have to come up with a way of documenting it and making sure that everybody understood. These spaces have been. Allowed to be used by this applicant, therefore they won't be allowed to be used by this applicant. And and that's that's kind of an explanation of item number four that Kathy asked about. So we're not saying that on-street parking would be used in every situation, but there are situations where it might be appropriate.
Okay, Dorothy?
I would like to make a couple of quick comments, but originally I I asked, I realized at too late a date. For some numbers, which I've seen, but I can't find them amongst the thousands of pieces of paper in my house. The number of new units built in Amherst since two thousand fifteen. And the breakdown of the number of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom and four-bedroom apartments. And then the number of parking spaces provided by the developer for the residents of those buildings. And then the number of Amherst Town parking permits issued to residents of those buildings. And I believe, because I've seen the figures, I just don't have them at my hand, that we would see. That there's a great disparity between the number of people moving into new units. And the parking spaces provided, causing a huge input increase in the number of town permits at twenty-five a year. To use a town streets and residential streets. So I just want to point out, we have a cause and effect. We, the municipal parking district, which we are at the moment not considering revoking. Which was enacted by town meeting, as was pointed out by Alyssa, has created now a shortage of parking. So thus what we're doing is we're passing a private responsibility to provide parking for tenants onto the public sector. And yes, the CVS thing is solely going to be paid for by a private director, although the town will give up the considerable income it gets. And and other improvements that are necessary, but to remind you, they're costs of many kinds, not just financial. And I will say, one good thing that has come out of it is the concept of shadow parking. Which was enacted at one thirty-two North Hampton, where they're guessing on how many tenants, future tenants would have cars. And they can't tell ahead of time. So in case more people had cars and needed parking than they were going to provide. They had an area laid out, set aside, dedicated, not paved, still imper still permeable of grass, which could be used as shadow parking if needed. I think that concept has come out of this discussion and I think it's a very positive one. But I do think that private sector should provide parking and not throw it onto the public sector. Thank you.
Chris, would you like to respond?
I wanted to let everyone know that we did receive Dorothy's questions. There were four questions that she asked and we received it this morning. And Nate Malloy spent a good deal of time today researching the answers to those questions. He has come up with answers to them. They are quite disparate. In other words, there's no real pattern to be shown as to how many parking spaces are assigned. In many of these developments and Nate may be able to summarize some of his findings. He wasn't able to complete that work today, but he would be able to provide you with that information sometime in the future. But if you wanted to ask Nate, he might be able to briefly summarize some of his findings.
Nate, would you please join us?
Sure, thanks, Nate Malloy. I I think Chris said it, the. You know, the, you know, I looked at multifamily and ADUs, you know, single families, we don't necessarily permit the number of parking spaces. And so. You know, typically for multifamily, a developer will propose parking that they think will work for the development. So for some, it may be, you know, one space per unit and that's efficient. John Robleski on four sixty-two Main Street. You know, went around and looked at various properties near his. And so for. You know, he also had commercial space. So he had thirty-two parking spaces. This is four sixty-two Main Street, for instance. Twenty-four units, thirty-two parking spaces and then seven commercial spaces. And so he felt that thirty-two parking spaces, off-street spaces was sufficient. You know, some other developer may say that they only need, you know, three-quarter space per unit. And I think that. I really don't think there's a, you know, I haven't looked at common threads, for instance, you know, what what's a ratio, what's the right percentage? But it really seems like it's contextual in terms of how big is the property? Is it in the village center? Is it near transit? Do they have a large enough property where they could do more spaces per unit? And so it's really dependent on type of unit two rental or ownership. It seems like ownership might actually tend to have two spaces per unit where rental has less. You know, I haven't examined it enough, but you know, I do think that it's really development by development and developer applicant by applicant. And it's really. You know, they make it work, right? So they, if they don't think a tenant or a resident will move in, they they'll adjust it accordingly, their plans accordingly.
Dorothy, did that get to your question at this time?
Not really, but thank you.
Obviously, there's more research going on. Alyssa?
So I'm supporting this because it's perhaps imperfect and I would like to know more about charging in lieu of parking, et cetera. But it does seem to go a ways to addressing our values of assuming that there are fewer cars in our shared future, right? So every five minutes, it feels like we're talking about more cars, less cars, more cars, less cars. But following up on what Chris just said about staff keeping track of the number of projects using the same on-street spaces. One of the things that I still don't feel has been addressed and so that I don't need per se an answer tonight. Well, I'd like some assurance, but I'm going to support it anyway. So I guess it doesn't really matter if I get the assurance or not. Is rather than talking about two or three different projects, perhaps counting the same spaces as being their spaces that that their people would use. What hasn't been, what has been brought up numerous times, but hasn't, we haven't gotten assurance about. Is if the permit granting authority does include on-street parking and staff says, sure, then you know, this makes sense based on this context. We don't have other people competing for it, et cetera. Perhaps it's a lower use area. But then of its own volition, the town council, the keepers of the public way decide, you know what? decide, you know what, we don't need that parking anymore. We need to turn that into a larger bike lane. We don't, because that's an underused area with very few cars parking in those spaces. We're not making a lot of money there, people don't tend to want to park there. And so we are going to change the usage of that, so we can have a multi-use path, we can have a bicycle, we can do the other things we want to do, we want to add a pocket park, whatever we want to do. What I don't want, so see, I'm giving you the answer already, is what I don't want is I don't want planning staff coming to the Town Council saying, oh, you can't make any changes to the public way because we already counted those spaces for these developers, and they're counting them, and so you can't make those changes. That would be an inappropriate way of tying the Town Council's hands. If instead, you're going into this with the assumption that you're advising the Permit Granting Authority that under current conditions, yes, it appears that they could consider the use of some on-street parking as meeting some of their parking requirement, because, for example, it's already underused as opposed to someplace like Lincoln or another highly-used area. But like I said, it would be really inappropriate to come to the keepers of the public way later and say, oh, no, no, we already gave those spaces to some other folks for their development. So are you planning to keep track of it that way, too? Because that's not something that's appropriate to tell the keepers of the public way, is that they can't keep the public way because a particular development is using those spaces. Except, in the context of, as we always do when we change parking, we're going to look at everybody who lives around there and uses that area to make sure that we don't negatively impact them, that the positives outweigh the negatives.
Chris?
Excuse me, so in that case, the Permit Granting Authority could put a condition on if they suspected that something like this might occur in the future, that would say if the conditions change and that on-street parking is no longer available, then you need to find some other mechanism for dealing with this, and that is a frequent way that the boards deal with the unknown, the future unknown.
Thank you. Evan?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're looking at this in the proper context, and I say that sort of based on Dorothy's question, because in it, she invoked the Municipal Parking District and also invoked the Town Center parking permits, and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page in understanding that that downtown parking is not really part of the conversation, because this Article VII doesn't apply to the Municipal Parking District. Now, sure, there are parts of our Town Center permit parking that are not in the Municipal Parking District, North Prospect, parts of South Prospect, Gaylord, but most of it is, and so when we're talking about impacts to the Town's parking permit system, we're talking about downtown, that's really a separate conversation. This has to do with residential developments outside of our downtown and whether or not we're providing flexibility, and I say that because downtown parking is always a lightning rod issue, as we'll see probably later this meeting. And so I want to make sure that we're not conflating those two arguments, because this really is parking everywhere except for downtown, and so talking about buildings being built without parking downtown, talking about Town Center permits really isn't germane to this conversation, where it will be germane to other conversations that I expect the future Town Council will have looking at the Municipal Parking District. Thank you.
Shalony?
Yeah, thanks, Evan. He covered that one point, that this is not relevant to educational districts and municipal parking. And the second thing is, I had asked a similar question to Kathy's about what, what is the problem we are solving with with this issue? I'm sorry, I'm surrounded by family. Okay, so, and so what is the problem we are solving with this? And I was told that the ZBA needs flexibility to decide how much space, and this is giving criteria, this is giving the criteria to decide how much, and even increased parking, if needed, be based on the context. So this is not only about reducing parking, but it could even allow for, depending on the context, ask for more parking spaces, and this bylaw change would allow for that, and Planning Board, I was told, spends too much time discussing because they don't have clear criteria and guidelines. And so that was the purpose of doing this, so I just wanted to add that.
Kathy?
Mandy should come first because I've spoken once.
Okay, Mandy Jo?
I'm just going to make a motion. I move to adopt revisions to Article VII Parking and Access Regulation, Section 7.00, General Requirements, and Section 7.9 Waivers of the Zoning Bylaw, by adding language shown in the bold slash italic and deleting language shown in strike-through on pages eight to ten of the motion sheet.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Okay, further comments at this time? Kathy?
Then, since that motion is on the table, I would move to delete the sentences that allow you to look at on-street parking. I think they're dangerous to put in this. What I just heard from Chris is there's already a lot of flexibility. To make that as part of the standard makes it complicated, and there are two places where it, it exists, so I would move to delete those.
Can I just ask the Clerk of the Town Council to put the bylaw up on the screen so that we can be more
I would second that motion.
I'm sorry, was that you, Mandy Jo?
That was Darcy, but the motion needs to be exactly clear on what Kathy's moving to delete, because it's not clear right now.
No, and so that's why it has to get up on the screen, because I don't have line numbers, so I can't tell you it's line number X. I could put it up on my screen, but you'd probably rather have
It is up on the screen.
I'm not seeing it. Does everyone else see it on the screen? I don't see it on the screen.
It's part of the shared screen now.
You have to scroll down.
It's too small for me to read.
Scroll down. No, scroll down.
Scroll down.
Down.
Can we miss?
Thank you. Not that far down. It's about line eight, seven or eight in that list of criteria under 7.0000.
Right there.
Right there.
Okay, it's in two places, so under 7.000, it's private use as documented through surveys of public or private on- or off-street parking. I would just make that as surveys of private parking, deleting, because I don't think the fact that there is a public lot nearby.
I'm sorry, Kathy, can you tell me what you would like me to change here?
Okay, so under the first bullet's bedroom count, the third, the second bullet is traffic, then parking use as documented through surveys of, I would strike out public. I would leave private, so you have to get the O out. And then take, you can take on or off-street, just do private parking. Okay, so it would read parking utilization as documented through surveys of private parking within eight hundred feet of the proposed use. And then further down is the proximity to public parking, including on-street and off-street. I would just take that entire thing out. That's what my, I'm proposing.
Okay, that's okay. Go ahead, you need further clarification, Athena?
No, I'm just trying to put it into a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second it.
Darcy seconded. Christine, you have your hand up.
Thank you. I think that these deletions would be appropriate, since this list is not inclusive. This is a list of things that could be considered. So by striking these out, it doesn't mean they can't be considered. Thank you.
Steve, you have your hand up?
We, we can spend all night debating exactly what is, what's meant by public parking. So you might interpret public parking to mean a private parking lot open to the public, which is if you go in a place like Boston, all those P-signs with white letters, blue, public parking, those are all private parking lots that are simply open to the public. I, I would be fine if we also eliminated the word pub-private, so through, as documented through surveys of parking within eight hundred feet of the proposed use. But to
That works, Steve.
Okay, so is this a friendly amendment?
I guess, yeah.
A private N, so let me just
Any reference to just parking. So we're not referring to on-street, off-street, private or public, just parking, through surveys of parking within eight hundred feet.
Okay, so the word private in that first bullet is going to be eliminated in that third bullet.
Yeah, and I wasn't the second or so, and I know Kathy agreed to that, and I don't know if the second or
Darcy, do you agree?
I think that's I'm confused, because it, it seems like deleting private then includes public. Is that correct or not? I think that, that for, maybe we could just further define public as metered or how could we, how could we define public parking?
So, so if I may, UMass has their own meters, right? So it would proximity to UMass, I mean, is UMass parking, is that public parking, or is that private parking? Because on one hand, it's public, because UMass is a public institution, on the other hand, it's private, that only certain people can get access to UMass parking.
With a permit. Kathy, you have your hand up. Is this to clarify something?
No, my, I'm just saying what Steve's done's okay with me, because the thing I really want to get rid of was the on-street parking, that you could, you know, look at whether there's space on the street, because that's where I think it's tipping over and what Alyssa's concerned about, that we somehow given away our right to determine the public way by making it a criteria. So as Chris said, they still have flexibility, but I want to get that you can count on-street, and I don't think there is such a thing as on-street private parking, so this whole sentence didn't make sense to me. And this, this cleans it up a lot.
George, you've raised your hand a couple of times and lowered it. Would you like to say anything?
I'm just trying to follow the logic here. I think Chris has just pointed out that no matter what this says, it still grants the flexibility to the Permit Granting Authority to consider parking, however you want to call it, unless you just say you can't look at parking. I guess you could put that in there.
It has on, on criteria such as, and then it lists the criteria. That's not an exclusive list, and it's a list for some level of interpretation.
Right.
This point, the motion is surveys of parking for the third bullet, and for the seventh bullet, eliminate the entire statement. Is there any further discussion on this? The motion's been on the floor.
Well, yeah, we have a question about the second, I'm sorry.
Friendly amendment, and Darcy, you were not willing to accept it. Remember, this is not an exclusive list of criteria. It is a list that says such as.
Yeah, no, if Kathy's good with it, that's fine. I'll, I can second.
All right, are there, is there any further questions on the amendment? Okay, the amendment to the zoning article is as you see it on the screen. It's been made and seconded. Any further questions? Then I'm going to bring that one to a vote. Okay? Pat DeAngelis?
No.
Darcy Demont?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is no. Mandy Jo Hanneke?
Hi.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
No.
George Ryan?
Hi.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Hi.
Andy Steinberg?
Hi.
Sarah Schwartz?
Hi.
Shalony Balnem?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Hi.
The motion passes with ten in favor, three opposed, no abstention, no absence. Okay, so now we're back to the main motion, and the main motion has been made and seconded. It is now as amended. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, I'm going to bring that to a vote. I'm going to start with Darcy Demont?
No.
Lynn Griesmer is a yes. Mandy Jo Hanneke?
Hi.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Hi.
George Ryan?
Hi.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Hi.
Andy Steinberg?
Hi.
Sarah Schwartz?
Hi.
Shalony Balnem?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Hi.
Pat DeAngelis?
Hi.
The motion, the, it passes twelve one zero zero. Okay? All right, we're moving on. This time, we're going on to the official zoning map, map fourteen A, parcel thirty-three, rezoning, North Prospect Street, amendment to Article Two, zoning district, Article Three, use regulations. Going to make the motion, and then we'll see where we go, to adopt a new parking facility district as part of Section two point zero four, special district, and as Section three point two three, parking facility district of the zoning bylaw as shown on page eleven to fourteen of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Brian, second.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? Darcy?
I move to postpone under Charter, Section two point ten C.
I just need to briefly consult. Athena?
That's a, under the Charter, right, just postpone so that automatically gets moved to the next regular, the next regular or special meeting.
And does not require a second?
Does not require a second.
Thank you. Okay. This item will now be on
December thirteenth.
December thirteenth, thank you.
Actually.
Yeah, why isn't it going to be on Saturday?
Technically, December eleventh. Technically, December eleventh.
Yeah. It's on Saturday at four towns.
And if we don't have a quorum, I will clarify with the town clerk what happens.
If we can't hold that meeting because there's not a quorum, then it would move to the next regular or special agenda.
Thank you. All right. Amendment to Article Three, Use Regulations, Section three point three two five, Mixed-Use Buildings and Article Twelve definitions. The motion is to adopt revisions to Article three point three two five, Mixed-Use Building, and Article Twelve definitions of the zoning bylaw by adding language shown in a bold slash italic and the leading language shown in bold, strike-through on page fifteen to sixteen of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Hanneke, seconds.
Thank you. Thank you. Dorothy, you have your hand up. Okay, Kathy, you have your hand up.
Yes, I would move to amend this to increase thirty to forty percent as it was when we first saw it from the planning board. Actually, the first time staff came, it was fifty percent. So forty is already low. I think going as low as thirty will never be able to go back up. I actually liked Steve's suggestion a week ago that you could do forty in the BG and something lower outside the BG. But I think to keep it simpler, I would just go to forty. So I moved to amend it with forty percent.
We're going to need to see the bylaw on the screen. Is there a second to the motion?
Second, Schwartz?
Okay.
Point of, point of clarification?
Yes.
I believe two numbers need amended at a minimum.
Okay, let's put the, it's, we're getting it up on the screen.
As part of the motion, at least.
Mandy is, of course, correct. So it's at least forty percent of the gross area. And then the, the line above it needs to read, Athena, go back up, no more than sixty percent.
Okay. Are there further questions or comment? The motion has been made and seconded. Evan?
Yeah, so I, I think it was Nate that spoke to this last time, and I just wanted to make sure I'm bringing you up again. So an earlier version of this was forty percent, but didn't define incidental space. And then the version that came back was thirty percent that defined incidental space. And during a CRC meeting, I asked Nate which he felt was more restrictive. In other words, which do we think would actually require a greater amount of actual commercial space that we envision? And his response, if I remember correctly, and he can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, is that probably the thirty percent with incidental space defined and not counting is actually more restrictive than the forty percent without incidental space was, and actually would generate more actual usable commercial space. So I just want, I think that's important context because when we're saying, well, an earlier version had forty percent, that was an earlier version that would have had more space counting as commercial space, but less active commercial space, where the thirty percent with incidental space defined and not counting actually gets us more active commercial space than an earlier version. Now, I'm sure Kathy's going to say, well, I don't care. I want forty percent of active space, and I understand that. But I, I do think that's important context because I think that when we say, well, it used to be forty and now it's thirty, it makes it sound like we're reducing the amount of commercial space. But actually, this thirty percent will probably result in the same or more active commercial space than an earlier version. So it hasn't gotten, it hasn't gone the direction I think the narrative has been around this.
Nate, would you like to amend what Evan said in any way?
No, I think the only point is, we define common space, not necessarily incidental. So it's the common space is shared by multiple uses. So the hallways, lobbies, other things. And his, his recollection was correct that, you know, before we didn't define that. So it could be that, you know, of the forty percent, a big percentage could be that common space. And now it's no longer counted toward the thirty percent. So we adjusted the forty down to thirty, but we also then excluded all the common areas in that calculation of the non-residential space.
So Kathy, go ahead.
Okay, Evan, I do appreciate that, and I did understand that. So I spoke too quickly, but what I should have said is I was going to say fifty. And instead of fifty, I thought forty would do it because of what Nate had explained, that we're excluding these common areas. Because when I'm looking at commercial and frontline space, having half that bottom floor be something other than residential, I think is a good goal. And so my understanding is the forty percent without the common thing is probably higher than forty. So you're right, it's not just going back to the earlier one, but I wasn't going to propose fifty this time.
Mandy Jo?
Yeah. I can't vote for this amendment because while I appreciate Kathy's idea of it's a good goal, when we look at the retail market analysis that was done in twenty eighteen before COVID, that fifty percent would, I truly believe would create at this point in time with the demand we have, empty storefronts, which is not what we need in downtown. And we, we can want all we want, we can want it, we can hope for it, but if the demand is not there, we do a disservice to our town if we just have empty storefronts because of our desire to make it forty or fifty percent. And the retail market analysis, I can't ignore, that said, basically with what we've already built since twenty eighteen, we've got twelve to fifteen thousand square feet of demand in the entire town. In the entire town. And, and if we take that fifteen thousand, the building that has been permitted at eleven to thirteen East Pleasant Street, at, at thirty percent takes up a third of that at over five thousand square feet. We don't have the demand according to the study to actually go higher than thirty percent in my mind. And we can wish all we want and we can hope all we want, but if we don't have the demand, going higher than that is setting us as a town up for empty storefronts or no new housing in downtown that also includes no new retail in downtown. And that's not a good place to be either.
Dorothy?
My comments not on the percent, but on the whole bylaw. So I'll wait a few moments.
Okay. Shalini, on the percent?
Yeah, on the percent. I think I had asked for specifically, you know, when we were making, having this discussion in CRC and just arbitrarily deciding, should it be thirty, should it be fifty, was very confusing. And so I had asked for what is the demand and, and Mandy did a great job of calculating all the different percentages, looking at the retail analysis. And I think that's what the two things I wanted to draw attention to. I think the council is already clear about it, but I just want, I'm saying this for the benefit of the public because we seem to keep hearing that we are reducing the amount required for retail. Whereas I want to again be clear that the current bylaw, the way it is, if you don't change anything, allows developers to come and build. There is no minimal requirement. So builders can right now come and build with, with just two percent retail on the ground floor. So what we are doing is actually improving upon what's existing. We're putting more restrictions, actually. Because we do have a shared vision and of creating the storefront, the road, street fronts to be all retail and so forth. So we're improving. The second thing is how did we arrive at the thirty percent and why that? Because we all want retail downtown and engaging businesses. But given the retail analysis and the demand for stuff and, and then having talked to, I went and talked to different businesses downtown and the retails, the new boutique that's open. I'm like, how much space are you using over here? And it was for the new store, lingerie, amazing store that's open downtown. It's seven hundred and fifty square feet. Looking at a restaurant, maybe it's larger. So if you take a building like twelve thousand square feet, we're getting about five, thirty percent, we're getting about five thousand square feet. And ensuring that the front is always, street-facing is always retail business. I think that gives us enough retail space on the street front, and we're enforcing that because right now that does not exist. So what we are proposing is actually improving and, and bringing the developers in with our shared vision of how to create and make sure that we're all on the same page. So that's why I really strongly invite us all to pass this because if we don't pass this and leave it to the next council, which as we can see zoning is complicated and it's going to take time for everyone to get on board. Meanwhile, people can come in and build without as little as two percent retail right now.
I'm going to go to Steve Schreiber. Is this on the percentage?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, so if I ran the zoo, I would require that the ground floor be flexible enough so that it could be retail or residential, because we don't know what the number is. And you can look at the central business district over the last hundred buildings that are built over the last hundred and forty years. There's an ebb and flow as to which is the more dominant, commercial or residential. So like if you look at the buildings on the so-called, you know, where Hastings is, that used to be residential above, and that residential was taken over by offices and by commercial interests because they're, that was the dominant force at the, at a particular time. The carrot, the often mentioned carrot shops, well, those used to be residential. It was a motel. Those were taken over by commercial. So I think that as a savvy developer, savvy builder would create that ground floor so that it could be converted from one to the other depending on where the opportunities are. So I mean, I think that Kathy's proposal is, you know, it's when, within the scope of reasonableness. I mean, it's ten percent more than what the current one is. The other thing I would do is if I was a developer, I'd be incredibly clever on what I, you know, what I called non-residential use. So in other words, it could be on any floor now. So I would look at the exercise room, if there's one, or the common area, if there's one. Which is, you know, maybe I was thinking that that would be only for the residents. I'd say, well, actually, let's open that to the public. And now I can count that towards my forty percent. So I mean, I think that, that no matter what we do, thirty percent or forty percent, I hope it's one of those two. I think that developers will be clever in meeting that requirement, but I particularly hope that they're, don't lock themselves in on that ground level into, you know, a design that makes it be, you know, something obsolete when it doesn't need to be obsolete.
Okay. Are there any other comments on the motion to amend? Dorothy?
You're muted.
You mean amend the number, the percentage number, is that correct?
Yes. That's correct.
So I have, my comment is not on that.
Okay, there, there is a motion to amend. It's been made and seconded. It appears on the screen. Are there any other comments on the motion to amend? Alyssa?
I have a process question.
Yes.
So if we pass the amendment and change it to forty percent, and then we take a vote, and we don't get the required two-thirds, can we put a motion back on the floor for the thirty percent?
A reconsideration?
No, I mean, this is where you get bollocked up when you amend something rather than having an alternate motion. So this is where things get complicated and people start quoting Robert's rules. But I want us to all know going in what the risk factor is because I don't want to vote for forty percent if nobody can bring back the thirty percent.
Mandy Jo? Do you have an opinion on that?
I believe that, say, the forty percent passes and then the main motion.
Mute.
Say, say the forty percent passes and then the main motion fails. I believe someone would need to reconsider.
Right.
That person would probably have to be someone who voted in the side that prevailed, which would be the, the, the no's, I guess. To reconsider and then then move to amend the main motion again to bring it back down to thirty.
Thank you.
I think is how it would technically have to happen.
Athena, do you have any further thoughts on that?
I'm trying to get my wheels turning and they just don't want to. I would have to take a moment and think about that.
Described it the way I would read it. It would have to come up as a vote to reconsider, a motion to reconsider. Which can be done immediately within the same meeting. Any further thoughts, Athena? Paul, anybody else? All right, the motion, I'm sorry, Paul?
Are there restrictions about zoning, voting on the same zoning thing twice within a certain amount of time?
It's been posted. And it required a posting of two weeks.
But, but I mean, it, it, once a zoning change fails, I'd have to look it up.
Mandy Jo, do you have an opinion?
Those restrictions, my understanding is only apply when the proposed zoning amendment has not received a positive recommendation from the planning board. This one has received a positive recommendation from the planning board.
Yeah. Mandy Jo and I had that discussion sometime in the last two month or so. Is there any further discussion on this?
Lynn?
Yes.
Okay. I would just as soon then make my comment now, since I may not have a chance to make it later.
Okay.
Okay. I understand why people want to vote for this today. Because they're buildings in process and we really do want to have, increase the percentage of mixed use, all right? And I understand the arguments on both sides, each of them trying to increase the number that we have now. I just want to state, however, that I feel that this amendment is not complete because it should be done together with the apartment zoning because they're too interdependent. And we have the mixed-use buildings without commercial because people didn't like the limit on apartment numbers. And we know that we have to talk about the two things. So the, also, in this process, a good deal of this mixed-use bylaw was omitted from this discussion. That was the part that talked about setbacks, shared public and private green space where you can create community, both the residents of the building and the shoppers for the lively level of interaction on the street that we are all seeking to have. So, and there's also that I believe that it says street-facing. And I wanted to increase that, and I brought it up several times, to pub, street and public-facing. Because if you had a long, narrow building with a one whole side of it could in fact be public-facing, but it wouldn't be street-facing. Give, that gives the developer and the businesses more flexibility. And I think we want to do that. So there are, I understand why we want to get this passed quickly. But this is very incomplete when you just take one part of it without putting it in its context. So I just want to make those comments. Thank you.
Okay. The motion's on the floor. It was made and seconded. There's now an amendment on the floor. And the amendment would, if you'll put it up again, change the number so that it's a sixty percent and a forty percent. Is there any further question or comment before I bring the amendment to a vote? Shalini?
So just to be clear, if this fails, we can still reconsider back to thirty percent?
All we're going to consider first is the amendment. If it fails, we go back to the original motion.
Okay.
Okay? Any further comment? So this is, we're voting on the amendment to the bylaw. Is, anybody need to see it on the screen again?
I can't record the vote and show it at the same time, so.
I, thank you for reminding me of that. I'm going to start with, I, I think I'm at Darcy.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is a yes. Hanicky?
No.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
No.
George Ryan?
No.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
No.
Sarah Schwartz?
Hi.
Shalini Balneum?
No.
Alyssa Brewer?
No.
Pat DeAngelis?
No.
The motion fails. We are back to the original motion. The amendment fails. We are back to. The amendment fails. We are back to the original motion. And it's a motion for the, um, ratio of 70 and 30. Are there any further comments? Darcy?
Point of order, can you tell us what the vote was?
I'm sorry, yes.
Six in favor, seven opposed.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve. I'm sorry. Darcy?
Yeah, I moved to postpone under Charter 2.10C.
Okay. That means this will either be taken up on December 11th or the 13th. Okay. We're going to move on to, uh, proposed bylaw rescission removal, general bylaw, 3.15 activities and amusements. George?
Thank you, Lynn. Um, I believe Athena can put something up on the screen to show what GOL is recommending.
Um, you have. I'll get that in just a moment, George. Why don't you go ahead?
Take a moment. Sure, let me, let me speak for a few moments while you, uh, while you do that. You have in your packet the, uh, long overdue GOL report on bylaws for future consideration. I'm sure you've all read that and, uh, are aware of all the recommendations that we made. There'll be a quiz later, but in the midst of those many recommendations, one bylaw that we looked at, we believed, um, was suitable for being rescinded. Um, when this was brought to us initially by the bylaw review committee, we were told that, um, the members of the bylaw review committee had concerns about it. They thought the penalty amount was much too excessive. The issues about criminal and non-criminal, um, penalties, but in particular, they felt that it might be viewed as unnecessary and perhaps overreaching. And they suggested considering deletion. And, uh, suggested also that we consult with the chief of police. Now that you have the bylaw up in front of you, you can see that is, the bylaw has to do with, um, basically, let me just read it. Um, can you see it there? Uh, you see my comments? Yeah, that's really not what I want you to see.
Okay, sorry, let me grab it.
I'm sorry, I want you to see the actual bylaw, you know? It's quite short. I can read it for you, but I think you would like to see it. Um, the title of the bylaw is activities and amusements. And I think it came from a different time and place, at least partly. But the non-criminal disposition, the penalty was $200. And the bylaw reads in its entirety, no person shall play at ball or any similar amusement in any street. No person or group of persons while playing at ball or engaging in any amusement or activity in any park or common of this town shall interfere with another event or activity already in progress or previously reserved. So yes, you now see what I just read. So the feeling of the bylaw review committee is this, we should look at it and some members felt it might be suitable for rescinding. We spoke with the chief of police. Um, and he, uh, his comments were in the other slide that you saw earlier and are in your packet if you had a chance to look at it. Um, but I will briefly read his comment. Um, essentially, I can't say I ever heard, this is the chief, of anyone ever being written up for a town bylaw 3.15 violation. There has been, I remember he says, some discussion in the language section about quote interfering with others. Uh, excuse me, interfering with other activities of others in progress or previously reserved. But in the end, the chief felt that if the town council thought that a bylaw should be rescinded, this one would be an excellent candidate. So his, uh, recommendation was that, um, he didn't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but he felt that this is one that has never really been enforced. The penalty we felt is excessive. And, um, so the suggestion or recommendation of the bylaw, uh, excuse me, GOL, is that we should rescind this bylaw.
Let me just remind you, this is a first reading. The second reading would be, uh, next week. Dorothy, you have your hand up.
I would like to agree with GOL. Uh, we did have a case that we had a complaint in this last year of somebody who went to play tennis had reserved the spot and found some school kids doing some kind of team activity or, uh, practice and was very annoyed. But to have a law like this with a fine, uh, it, this is the kind of thing that makes it, gives police a bad name if they enforce it. Um, so I really think that this, I do agree with GOL. We should take this off the books. Should be dealt with in other ways.
Are there any further comments on this bylaw?
Just to follow up to, uh, a comment by Dorothy, the other comment that was made, I think by the chief and also by the members of the committee is, maybe I think actually Pat might have made this comment that there are better ways to deal with these issues, um, than having a penalty and, and having a bylaw of this nature. So that was the second argument in addition to the fact that it's never actually been enforced in the chief's memory. Uh, and secondly, that, that there are better ways to deal with these kinds of disputes, such as the one that Dorothy just described.
Okay. Are there any further comments? Seeing none, this will be on the agenda on December 13th for its second reading and a vote. We're going to move on to amendments to the town council's policy regarding patrol and regulation of the public way regarding the performance shell on the town common and delegation of authority to the Board of License Commissioners. And I just want to remind people that we did vote 8.4 on this, which allows us to act tonight. Evan, this was a TSO discussion. Please feel free to comment.
Yep, so, uh, there are two changes being recommended, um, that have to do with two different referrals. So one was a referral for us to look at, um, reservations of the performance shell that we just an hour ago, uh, unanimously approved. Um, and then the other was to look at, um, reconciling, uh, some issues around licensing lunch carts. Um, that latter piece has two components to it. One is lunch carts that are on sidewalks. One is lunch carts that are on street and consuming on-street parking spaces. Um, TSO only dealt with the former. The latter still has to be dealt with. And as you saw in our carryover report is something we're suggesting the, um, next version of TSO takes up in the next legislative session. Um, I, I wrote probably, uh, an obnoxious amount on this in the TSO report, so I won't repeat it, but I'd be happy to field any questions on these two changes that we are recommending.
And it's going to be in the form of two different motions.
Correct.
Are there any questions on either of these at this time? And I'm going to make the first motion and we'll look for a second to amend the town council policy regarding the control and regulation of the public way by inserting the words including reservations of the performance shell to section 1.8. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion? Then we're going to move to a vote on that. Mandy Jo?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
All right.
Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalony Balneum? Shalony, looks like she is now absent. Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Patty Angelus?
Aye.
Darcy Demone?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer? Isn't I? It's unanimous for those of us that here are here, there's 12, 0, 0, and 1 absent. Um, the next, uh, is to amend the town council policy regarding the control and regulation of the public way by adding the following language as section 3E and the renumbering of subsequent sections. Reservations of sidewalks for lunch carts. All reservations of sidewalks associated with the licensing of lunch carts by the Board of Licensing Commissioners. Town council delegates the review and action authority to the Board of License Commissioners with notification to the town manager of all requests and approvals for inclusion in monthly report provided to the town council. Is there a second?
Second drop.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to move to a vote. Dorothy?
Yes.
Evan?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Kathy?
Yes.
Steve?
Aye.
Andy?
All right.
Sarah?
Aye.
Shalony? Oh, I'm sorry, she's absent. Alyssa?
Aye.
Uh, Pat?
Aye.
Darcy?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer's and I, Mandy Jo?
Aye.
It's unanimous, 12, 0, 0, 1.
Lynn?
Yes.
Point of clarification?
Uh huh.
Sorry, I was just thinking back onto the two motions, well, the two, um, yeah, the two motions that, um, the right to postpone was invoked on. Our next council meeting is actually, I believe, this Thursday at 5:30.
You're correct. It is. And the only thing that is required is there needs to be not just a quorum, but there needs to be a sufficient number of people to vote. Thank you for that clarification. So it's either December 9th or the 11th or the 13th. Okay. I will consult with the, um, chair of TSO as to where that fits on the agenda. Dorothy?
Okay, I have in my calendar 5:30 TSO town reorganization, then public forum. Uh, that's a town council meeting? I thought it was a TSO meeting.
It's a TSO meeting, but we convened it as a committee of the whole so that the town council has the opportunity to attend and ask questions and hear the public forum. There'll be four parts, there'll be four parts to that meeting. The first part is actually a primer information session. During that time, councillors will be asked if they have any questions. The second part is a public forum on the DEI department. The third part is a public forum on the crest department. And the fourth part is TSO meeting. I think the tricky issue is which, or which one of these meetings would we make a?
Yeah.
It has to be the first one. The first one.
Has to be the first one. So it's the information session.
Well, there's just too much going on that night. There's the the discussion of Hickory Ridge and East Street Housing and, uh, also there's just too much going on.
I, I, I agree with you, but the rules are the rules. Okay?
I'm sorry, point of order, Lynn, can, uh?
Yes.
Will you let us know? So it's two thirds vote. Is that two thirds of us, the 13, or is it two thirds of those present?
It's
It's a hard nine.
It's a hard nine. It's, it's two thirds of the
The full town council.
So there can't even be a vote unless there, or I'm sorry, just continuing to the point of order. So a quorum is nine, basically.
That in this case, a quorum would have to be nine. Athena, thoughts?
The charter says it has to go on the next regular or special agenda, which is 5:30 on Thursday.
Right.
We don't, if we don't have nine councillors participating, but there is a quorum, I don't see how.
In other words, if there's seven councillors, I don't see how we can have a vote.
There are other provisions that I can talk to Lynn about.
Okay, Mandy Jo, let's do that. And I'll try to send a clarifying email to councillors tomorrow. Okay? All right. Any further comment?
Follow up on that quickly, Lynn?
Yeah.
Because I, I'm sorry to belabor this, but this has thrown our schedule into complete chaos because one councillor decided to take advantage of the charter rule because it was convenient for that person to do that. So now no one knows on the town council if we're going to be able to vote on this on Thursday or on Saturday or on Monday, and the public doesn't know, which is the exact opposite of transparency. So we're all trapped in this hole that we can't find our way out of until we get you know, the actual legal knowledge to make sure we've got this 100% right. As Mandy Jo says, clearly it's nine. And what this also does is it tells our fellow town councillors, oh, well, if you don't want to do this Thursday night, then I guess you better not show up for the DEI and crest public forum. Like, my mind is just exploding here over the irresponsibility of where we're finding ourselves. So I'm begging, I guess, that we do get ask you to go to all that work of making that additional journey. You clearly have to post it for Thursday. I don't think you have any choice that way. But then the question is, like, we're going to need you to like write out, like, this is what'll happen if we do it this way. This is what'll happen if we do it that way. Because people are going to have to make decisions as to whether or not they're showing up for Thursday, Saturday, or Monday. So thank you for all that extra work you're having to go to. And I don't know how we're possibly going to inform the public other than our regular posting that this is what is happening.
Mandy Jo?
I guess I'll just say it here. The charter has a second right to postpone that allows four councillors to invoke automatically another postponement of which then the matter cannot be heard for another five days at a minimum. If that is invoked at the time, it is brought at the first council meeting that has a quorum at this, which would be assuming there's a quorum of the council on Thursday, November 9th, uh, December 9th. Then next time it would be heard is December 20th because that is the next council meeting that is, I believe, that is more than five days after the December 9th meeting. And at that point, no other postponements can be made of this, these items under the charter.
So the postponement, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, yeah, the 11th.
Five business days.
Yeah, the 11th nor the 13th satisfies it. Okay. We'll work around it. Andy?
Yeah, I was just going to point out the same thing Mandy did. And, uh, in, add the, putting the two together, that would create certainty for the public, which was what Alyssa was concerned about, about the date on which it would be heard again.
So at this point, it will be on the agenda for the ninth, for the first meeting on the ninth. Okay? And that meeting starts at 5:30. Okay. Um, we're done with the public ways. We're moving on to the town manager's evaluation memo. Um, we discussed this once before. It has since been sent to you to ask for additional comments. I received none. I did take the comments that I heard on that evening. I did listen to the, um, discussion on the tape. Based on that, I made a red line version and a clean version. And we are prepared tonight to further discuss this and if possible, adopt it. Are there further comments? Mandy Jo?
Um, I had, I think, one. And I have a couple, but most of them are clerical, but on page six, um, this, I guess, first full paragraph, the addition that starts one specific councillor request is that the town to update the fire EMS staffing study. Um, is that only a request of one councillor? Or was that a specific council request? Because I object, I guess, to, unless we as a council want that study updated. Um, I, I don't think it's appropriate to put it in here if it really is just one councillor unless the whole council wants it updated because I guess my point is, I don't think we need an update of the staffing study. It's going to say the same thing it said for the last 40 years, which is they're understaffed. Um, so I would delete that sentence personally.
I have no problem deleting it. Is there anybody who has a problem deleting it? And it's gone. Are there any other comments?
Oh, I had one other one. Sorry, it takes a while to page through.
That's okay.
Page fifteen. The addition of finally-
Let me get to it.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
The last sentence, finally, the UMass Agreement has expired and is in need of renegotiation and replacement. Um. I think the evaluations had stronger wording than that, must be renegotiated and replaced. Um, I, that's my memory, is that that wording isn't quite strong enough.
Okay, so it would say, and must be renegotiated and replaced.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that. Any other comments? Are there any other comments from anybody about anything with regard to the memo? Then the motion is to adopt the FY twenty-one Town Manager Performance Evaluation as amended. Is there a second?
Shane, seconds.
Are there any further comments? Seeing none, I'm going to move to a vote. And I start with Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalini Baumel is absent.
Oh, I'm here.
I'm sorry, thanks. Shalini, did we lose you for a little bit?
Yes, it was my internet, but I'm back.
Okay, okay, Shalini.
Yes.
Please, um make sure the record notes that Shalini lost connection and is back. Shalini, yes? Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Uh, Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Darcy Dumont?
Uh, abstain.
And Lynn Griesmer is in, I, and Mandy Jo Hanke?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Whoops, yes.
Okay, so it is um, twelve in favor, none opposed, one abstention, no absent. Okay? Moving on to the performance goals, I believe is where we are next. And I understand tonight we are only going to talk about the policy goals. And I'm calling on George Ryan, and um, George, would you like us to put this up on the screen?
Yeah, what I, I think that would be wise, Lynn, but I'm gonna suggest, I'll explain briefly why we're only talking about the policy goals. Um, and then we could go through it. This is, of course, up to you and the rest of the council, but we could go through it section by section. Um, um, but um, what happened with GOL, we took the comments, I got a number of colleagues sent comments to us. Um, and we went through and produced the draft that you have in front of us. Um, I actually have it on my screen, I don't know if it's up on the screen yet, but I think it should be for you to see. Um, this is the draft, uh, Town Management Performance Goals twenty twenty-one, twelve oh one. Um, right, let me see if what you're seeing is what I'm looking at. Um. Because I plan to use this as we go along. Um, yes. Um.
Okay, George, I'll ask for people to give input. But I also want to just remind people that we are not going to vote tonight. We'll wait until we have the full set, okay?
And so, um, we only got through, we spent more than half of our time last time, uh, going through this bit of the business we had to take care of first. Um, we only got through the policy goals. And so what we decided is to send you the document, which is the policy goals with the changes um, for your review. We will meet on Wednesday, we have a special meeting on Wednesday. Uh, my colleagues graciously agreed to meet, and we will, uh, go back at this a second time uh, with the management goals, plus any changes or, uh, you know, comments you've made tonight related to policy goals. So, and then we'd come back to you, um, at the next council meeting um, for hopefully final review of the whole document.
Okay. Um, are there any questions or comments related to the opening paragraph or the title? Okay, I'm seeing none. Let's scroll to Climate Action. And are there any comments with regard to the suggested changes on climate action?
I can just make a comment that, again, with each section, what we were trying to do, um, and hopefully we're succeeding, is providing specific um, objectives that are at least potentially measurable um, and to give Paul as clear guidance as possible. So that was driving the general uh, you know, our general review was under the objective section to try and produce things that were as concrete and specific as possible that we felt um, the whole council or most of the council could agree to. And so in the climate section, you see a number of, of more specific um, ideas that we are asking Paul to focus on in the coming year.
Okay. Have, have these been discussed with Paul, George?
Uh, Paul, I believe has seen a draft of this. I am keeping him in the loop. Um, I, I was going to invite him to the last meeting, but I realized that that really would not have been very good use of his time since we were going to be basically doing this and, uh, you know, drafting it while he was sitting there. Um, so he can correct me, I believe I did send him a copy of this. I certainly can send him one if I forgot. Uh, and we will certainly send him the next draft as well. Um, so I guess he'd have to speak to that. I, I thought I had sent him a copy of this.
I believe you have, Paul?
Yeah, yes, yes, he has, yes.
All right. Um. Because it's, it's very clear these are supposed to be done in you know, discussion with the Town Manager.
Absolutely, and yes.
Are there any, we're moving on to Community Health and Safety? Are there any comments on Community Health and Safety? This is kind of split on two pages. Um, but it's actually fine. Andy?
It's a first, uh, just a simple question. If we notice something that is really just a one-word Scrivener's type of uh correction, can we skip that and then just send that along to uh, you and George for later consideration rather than wasting time of the entire council to discuss that kind of a matter?
Andy, that is a perfect example of something we should do, yes. So Scrivener errors, et cetera. Change, suggested changes in language should be sent to Georgia and me. Thank you for asking. Are there any further questions on two? Then go on to three. This is Economic Vitality. Shalini?
I had, uh, offered a suggestion for, um, I wonder if that, what was the reasoning or if there was any discussion on it about uh, including a comprehensive economic development plan that includes vision, goals, strategies, and actions because we haven't had an economic development, uh, director and we are planning to hire one. And it would, uh, it would be great to even present to the town, to present to the stakeholders, residents, everyone that this is the comprehensive economic development plan and then have specific strategies that uh, move towards reaching those goals and vision.
Okay, are there any? Yes, George, go ahead.
Reason, I apologize, Shalini, the reason it didn't get in is because you did send yours in time, but I didn't see it. Um, and so it's in the packet for Wednesday's meeting. But uh, I think you're mentioning it now and perhaps people having, if they may have any comments on it, but yes, it will be uh, included in the next draft. Um, and I apologize for not getting it in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments on Economic Vitality? Kathy?
Um, I, I guess I would just urge when you do this reworking, George, some of the elements that Shalini has talked about are listed in the one, two, three, four, fives.
Yes.
So rather than creating another task, maybe there can be something in overacting and overarching, and then it would include things such as, because I, I don't want to put a lot of reports on a poll's table, uh, so it's, it's just a way of artfully wording this.
Okay.
Okay. Um. Shalini?
Uh, I just want to offer a different perspective that it's more than wording. It's, uh, actually, when we had met with Paul and our earlier Economic Development Director, there, uh, it was pointed out by the earlier Development Director that we don't actually have a shared uh, vision or a clear vision or branding for our town. And so me, you know, it's, it's, it's obviously the town managers, I am, I would love his perspective on it, not right now, but when the time comes, like, when he thinks it's the right time to do that, but we do actually need a marketing branding plan. And it's not to say that these individual activities are not important, but we just want to also make sure that at some point that comprehensive plan is created.
I, I, as a councillor, would like to make two comments on that. One is, um, there is a serious effort that the bid is going under and the chamber dealing with marketing and labeling, and that has to be brought into consideration here. The other thing is that if we are talking about a comprehensive economic plan, we are talking about a financial commitment because this is not usually something that is done solely by an employee, but usually involves a consultant and perhaps facilitated conversations and needs to be done consistent with the master plan.
Okay. That is my concern, um, you know, if we're I don't know, what we've got on a plate, we, we have to bring home a school, we have a, a, a lot of big things to do to spend additional money. Uh, I, I just think we need to be careful. That's it.
Yeah. George?
This is good, um, this is exactly what we, we need and we want, speaking for GOL, but it does give you a sense of a challenge we'll face, which is um, crafting, uh, something that will satisfy Shalini but also satisfy the, the rest of us. And so what I'm hearing, and this is, we'll come back to this in GOL, but people can also weigh in now or later. What I'm hearing is that this might be a little bit too ambitious, um, given, uh, what we're trying to do here. Um, both in terms of the involvement of the bid, the chamber, uh, financial costs for some kind of reporting or some kind of comprehensive development plan. Um, so you know, I could create and I will certainly try to create something that will reflect what Shalini's suggesting, but I'm also hearing some resistance and some pushback. So, um, I don't really want to spend a lot of time fashioning something that many of you are really not that keen on. Um, the challenge we always face in doing this, which I think is a perfectly uh, natural and, and healthy one, is that we're trying to create a document that the majority of us, if not all of us, can agree to. So, um, if people want to weigh in here some more now or later, um, but what I'm hearing is a little bit of, uh, not complete agreement about the idea of a comprehensive development plan as something specific that we want Paul to do in the, in the coming year. But if people are willing to, you know, I can write that in. But I'm looking for some sense that others would like this as well.
Shalini?
I think that could be part of the job description of the new Economic Development Director that we're hiring, so we don't have to hire a consultant. But it could be taken and it doesn't have to be an either or, either we go all out or we just don't do it, but, and just do some wordsmithing here. We could do something that the new Economic Development Director could put, especially it gives legitimacy to the work that the bid and chamber do, otherwise it's seen like, oh, it's those people out there who are doing this and it's not the town. So there's a lot of confusion about what, and actually, we're all working together, but that needs to be put within a single comprehensive as a town policy, or, I mean, sorry, goals or vision.
I, I want to be clear that mine is not a negative, it's just a caution that this is not a small item. Right. And, uh, that it, it has economic, it has financial implications, and it needs to be done, if it's gonna be done, it needs to be done well, and it requires a huge commitment. So I do have hesitancy particularly about being able to achieve it within one year. Uh, Alyssa?
So I won't pretend I'm not tired and having a little trouble following where we are at this point, but, so we're within Economic Vitality. We're looking at the objective, we're not looking at language that Shalini provided because there just wasn't time for that, even though she turned it in at a certain time. And it's talking, she's talking about a specific plan, and she's also talking about hiring an Economic Development Director, which we're not hiring, which is not in the budget, so I don't know why we're talking about that, so I'm confused. And secondly, we're talking about adding some words, like a whole nother section, to this Economic Vitality section. Please explain, because I understand what you explained about how that process might work. I understand what she indicated about a position we are not filling, and so I am really lost, and I want to weigh in, as George indicated, would be helpful, and referencing back to what Mandy Jo's conversation was about an earlier thing. One Town Councillor, as brilliant as our individual ideas might be, need support from the rest of the Town Council in order to craft words to make that happen.
George? You need to unmute, George.
Sorry. I'm going to read her statement. This is what I'm working with at the moment. This is a document she sent me that I unfortunately did not share with my colleagues in time. Under Economic Goals, which is what we're talking about right now, quote, "comprehensive economic development plan that includes vision, comma, goals, comma, strategies, comma, and actions." So that's what I've got. Um, I can't rewrite that. And I can put it in literally. Um, but I don't think that's going to win over the majority of my colleagues. So what I might suggest to Shalini is if she has something more specific or concrete, um, that would help. Um, but that's what I've got. And what I'm hearing is some reluctance to do something of that nature in a one-year goal in this kind of document.
Shalini, or Alyssa, Shalini, go first.
Uh, I was just gonna respond to Alyssa's thing. I know we don't have a permanent position, but we are hiring someone from the funding, we're getting ARPA funding to, for two or three years. So I was just offering that as a note to Paul that um, that could be part of the job description of the person they'll be hiring, who's, it's called something else, economics, something else. But that could be part of his role of how do we, because I think it's just not clear to the public when the bid and chamber present things, and they are act, and we had our own downtown presentation. And, and that's why I think it's part of the economic vitality, it needs to be part of the goals that the Town Manager clarifies what, you know, what is our goal, as economic development goal, or for the town, what is the vision, or rather than having individual items that we are doing, how do they tie together? And, um, and what are the, and then what are the specific stra, so what we have are specific strategies, but we don't know what are the, the specific goals and what is the shared vision, who are the stakeholders, just somehow some clarity around what is our shared vision as a town? And I'm just saying that because I've heard in the past that anyone who's hired in that role needs to know that to be able to implement rather, because otherwise they'll just be doing individual things that are disconnected.
Alyssa, you have your hand up.
So simply to respond, now that I understand what we're actually talking about, and I don't disagree with the things that you want to do, Shalini, I totally appreciate the need to do them. And I understand that we're talking about the temporary position, and I also understand based on my previous experiences, how difficult it was to hire our one and only Economic Development Director that wasn't a temporary position. And so I have absolutely no faith that we will be able to find someone in the next year to even fill that role. So given that we will probably not have that body available to do the things that are so important to do, and given that we already have an extensive list in this goal right here, which we have not been able to accomplish in the past, and do not believe that I will be, will be able to accomplish it in the next year without a lot of optimism, I cannot agree to- I cannot agree to supporting adding that information into this goal. I think the way it reads right now is already ambitious, given what we generally are able to get done. Even though I don't disagree with the need for those things to get done, I don't think it belongs in this document at this time.
Okay, I, we're going to move on to the four capital projects. Please scroll up, Athena. I'm looking for comments on item Roman numeral four.
We'll make a comment if no one else will. I'm sorry, Mandy.
Andy Jo?
I think George and I might be going for the same thing regarding the MSBA school replacement, um, elementary school building project. Um, we needed help from either Kathy or Steve regarding what is happening in the next year so that that can be correct, um, because we weren't exactly sure what should go in under number one on this one. And we wanted to create more specific goals instead of continue progress. We wanted to be a little more specific of what that meant. And we just didn't know what should be in it for the school building project.
George, did you want to comment or shall I ask Kathy to comment?
Uh, let Kathy go and I have something I do want to say.
Kathy? I can make an attempt to give you a, a sentence, Mandy. You know, you're correct. I mean, because the actual MSBA sets out various times they meet. And if we miss their meeting date, we slip on our timeline of building the school. But it's not so much they say you have to have it in by such and such a date. It's that if we don't get one thing in by March, we won't get the next thing in by June, and then we won't get the next thing in by December. So I, I can craft something that would say, um, you know, it's, it's meeting the town's goals to be able to get this through the MSBA process. So I'll just come up with a sentence. Thank you. And you'll forward it to us. Thank you. Yep, yep. Um, George?
Just drawing my, your all attentions to three and four where, and also to Paul, I'm sure he's picked this out too. We're asking him to fund and begin the schematic design phase to replace into the central fire station. And specifically number four, finding and securing a new location for the DPW headquarters. So at this point, we're not, um, we, GOL feels that this should be something very specific and concrete and doable in the coming year. Um, so the first question is, do other, our colleagues agree with this? And then obviously for Paul, he will weigh in whether he thinks this is something. But, um, we felt this is, this is something that we should specifically be asking him to do in the coming year, three and four.
Kathy? Uh, my, my biggest concern about this explicit is the one I've raised every time I've looked at our budgets. Um, I don't disagree that these are all important, but trying to do them at the same time, we're also trying to bring home a school. Um, and taking on the debt for the library, it's a big squeeze. So, um, saying that we want this location within the next year is problematic for me. But I guess if, part of it is that if we have to split DPW up, that it doesn't all go in one location, we can split them between two. It doesn't need as much acreage. We're, we're trying to make some, you know, practical forward motion, if that's what all of this says here. Um, so I'm just worried of trying to get them all going in the same two or three-year time period and particularly next year. Um, the school is going to be a big ask, so. Andy?
Yeah, I, I think I'm getting really concerned about this because it really is not a wise use of public funds to uh, spend money on a schematic design without a location and, uh,
You do one.
We, until we know what the location, we, we have a sequence that we have in place, and I don't know that we have an alternative as much as I want to move forward with fire station. The logical and the only logical fire station location we have is the DPW building. And we can't move forward with that location with any certainty unless we find another location for DPW. So I just don't understand how this is a feasible ask or wise use of funds.
Steve?
Uh, that was well said and close to what I was going to say, but I, I think that three and four could be the wrong order. I also think that, um, well, I won't be, you know, I won't be on this body in another four weeks, but they, I think that they're all our alternate locations for a central fire station. So in other words, I think that it's all moving parts. So I, I think that whatever is said for DPW also needs to be said for central fire station. But, um, there's a lot of other things like procurement, like in other words, once there isn't a decision to move ahead with architectural services, an architect has to be hired. So, um, I don't know how much specific that has to be, but, um, yeah, to me it seems both too specific and it seems too specific to me.
Um, I'm going to call on myself. Um, the only thing I would do with four is to use the word locations. And if needed, a schematic design so that we introduce the idea that DPW might have to be split up. And I am very sorry to hear people thinking we need to back off. George?
Yeah, I, I guess I'll speak for myself here and let my colleagues in GOL, um, speak for themselves. But, um, I feel strongly that, that, you know, it's been three years now and I understand. Well, I'm sure Paul understands better than anyone the challenges here. But the feeling was, or my feeling was, we need to move forward on this. Um, the usual language of exploring, you know, and that kind of thing. At this point, that's just pointless. Um, either just take it out completely and we'll just, eventually someday, something will happen and then we can go back to the four capital projects. Or we need to say, look, we have to secure a location or locations for the DPW building and get these four projects started. And we are asking him, we're, I'm suggesting that we're asking him to find and secure a location or locations. And the rest of it, you know, number three, I, you know, I don't really care. You're right, four has to be done, um, in the end for three to take place. And beyond that, I don't want to get specific, but we felt we had to say something specific about the fire, about the, excuse me, about the DPW site, um, this time out, or we should just stop talking about it.
Alyssa?
So just two added piece parts. It needs to say in three, or if three becomes four and vice versa, that replacement of the central fire station at the DPW site, right? It just needs to be clear that that's what's going to happen, because there's been no talk of having, you know, you know, how we're of it being anywhere else, right? And so if the fact is that the replacement of the central fire station is at the DPW site, then that needs to be said in here very clearly, because that helps inform us and in the public moving forward that it's not just we're designing some mythical new central fire station. It's specifically going to be at that site. And then following, I know that may seem so totally obvious to you, but it's not obvious to the public that that's definitely where it's going, is at the current DPW site. That's end of discussion. And the other item, following up on what Lynn said and how you decide to do that wording to say potential multiple locations, which I know makes DPW very unhappy, but seems to be the place that we're at. I don't like the phrasing, finding and securing. Uh, we've been finding for 10 years. Minimum for DPW, we haven't found it. So it's securing new locations, multiple locations. It's not finding. We're, we're out of that process. We're securing locations. And so if that means some equipment goes here, some equipment goes there, we're moving forward with that. There's no more finding in, in that, in that phraseology. So I would be super clear about that, but I appreciate the need to say something about it being potentially. It, it looks like it's going to have to be multiple locations, because nothing magical has happened yet.
Okay. We're moving on to housing affordability. Comments? Shalini?
Oh, okay. Um, I had offered, uh, just being very specific about again, creating year-round shelter as opposed to, what was it, looking for it or something?
It says seasonal or year-round shelter. It's already in there.
Uh, no, it, it was just a, oh yeah, it's instead of exploring, it was, okay, so they've changed that. Okay, good. Uh, and the other part was, um, focusing, uh, did we add workforce housing as a, focusing on workforce housing and diversity and home ownership? Um, adding, making that a focus.
The various first sentence refers or part of the thing refers to that and then refers to the comprehensive housing policy, which includes all of them.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry I didn't see that.
Alyssa?
When it comes to the shelter, this may seem obvious to some of you, but I think it could use a little clarity. When we're talking about ensuring the continued operation of a seasonal shelter, which we have had for several years now. And we're looking at a permanent seasonal meaning as opposed to cha-changing locations or year-round shelter. I want the wording to better reflect the fact that in both cases, we are ensuring the operation. We are not creating it ourselves. It's not a building we are finding and funding and hiring people for. It's ensuring that someone is operating such a thing, because otherwise, if you say ensuring about the continued, should say continued, operation of a seasonal shelter. And then you use different wording for the second one. I think that clearly implies you want a different style of management for the second one. And I don't think our community has agreed to that at all.
George?
I don't know that it's been ruled out or should be ruled out, that the town could in fact own a building, but contract with someone else to actually run the shelter. I certainly agree with Alyssa, the town does not want to be in the business of running a shelter. But it may turn out that it would make sense, maybe, for the town to actually purchase a building. Um, and then contract with others to run a shelter. So she's suggesting that under no circumstances would she be, uh, open to the idea of the town actually um, purchasing a building, or it may be obviously creative use of funds, but it would be a building owned by the town. Or she's simply saying that under no circumstances would she want to see the town actually operating a shelter.
Alyssa?
I, I don't think it's relevant what Alyssa wants at all, given that Alyssa's not going to be in office in January. So what I'm talking about is the goal for the town manager. The town manager's goal is to ensure the continued operation of a seasonal shelter. And his secondary goal is to ensure operation of a permanent seasonal or year-round shelter. It doesn't have need to say in Amherst. We wouldn't suggest in Chutesbury or Leverett or Pelham. It's that we want there, our community has expressed a clear desire to have such a thing. I don't care who owns it, but when you talk about creating separate than ensuring, you're implying that a decision has been made. Ensuring could also encompass the possibility of the town purchasing a building. Although the idea of the town purchasing a building, given all the other things we're doing, sounds a little outrageous to most people at this point. But nonetheless, all I'm talking about is ensuring the operation of a shelter in both cases. Continuing operation of what we have and future operation of something else. We don't need to get into the specifics. But by doing it this way, you've, you've created specifics you didn't intend to create.
Okay, let's move on to the last one. Social racial equity and social justice. Any comments? All right, uh, George, do you need any other, uh, discussion at this point?
Uh, again, just asking my colleagues to send any specific comments, uh, whether they be just script errors or general comments or suggestions about wording. I've taken down lots of notes. Uh, I assume my colleagues have done the same. Um, and I just also mentioned, if you scroll all the way down, if you don't mind, Athena, to the very end of the document, um, one addition was made under management goals, um, that we did not discuss, uh, at the last meeting, but we'll, we'll be discussing on Wednesday, but I'd like people to be aware of it. Whether they're like it, opposed to it, or whatever, they might want to weigh in. It could also go under policies. Uh, it could also be stricken. But you should look at that and, and give your thoughts or suggestions if you have concerns or you like it or don't like it. So we will meet on Wednesday at 10:30 and it will be the sole item on our agenda to work our way through, uh, any, the change language we've heard tonight. And, uh, and then go to the management goals and then bring back that to the council.
Okay, so I have a, a final comment or two here. Um, first that you continue to, uh, be in at least email, if not direct dialogue with the town manager as you complete this. The other thing I want to point out, the financial guidelines, the goals for the town manager and the next item on our agenda all go before the next council, at which point they can change them. Okay, but I also want to have people go back to remembering our time when we arrived on the council for the first time. Somebody, thank heavens, handed us a set of goals, handed us financial guidelines and handed us a calendar. And we did make changes in those. But at least we didn't have to start from zero. So George, thank you for your work on this and we look forward to the next rendition, the next rendition. Okay. Uh, the next one is the town council meeting schedule. As I've stated earlier, it is, as far as we're concerned, it's a draft. All we need to do is adopt it and understand that the next council can change it. It was on the consent agenda. We did agree that we could approve it tonight. And we then pulled off the actual approval of the calendar to this time in the agenda. Are there any questions, comments? Alyssa?
Yeah, I don't think state of the town belongs at a regular town council meeting.
Okay.
Should be a separate event. And so I think that if you, you can make a note, you can say tradition, the big tradition of three years length is that we did it this way, but, um, that doesn't mean it's not required in any way to do it that way.
Actually, the first year we didn't do it that way. Year two and three, we did. Okay? Any other comments on it? Then we are going to ask you, uh, to adopt the 2022 town council meeting schedule as amended. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Are you amending by changing the date of the state of the town?
Just put a note by it.
Okay.
Thank you, Athena. Are there any further questions? Comments? Then we'll move to a vote. Um, George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalini Balneum? Shalini is?
Yeah, she's just not unmuted.
Okay, she's going yes. Okay, Shalini, can you unmute, please? All right, present, but, present but silent. Alyssa?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Darcy?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmerz and I, Mandy Jo?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Abstain.
Evan Ross? Evan Ross.
Aye.
Twelve in favor.
That was a yes, sorry.
Okay, twelve in favor, no opposed, one abstention and no absence. We've taken care of the town manager's appointment of the town. And we're so, we're moving on to committee and liaison reports. Uh, community resources, Mandy Jo.
Just that on January 10th, 2022, at 7:00 PM will be the public hearing on the proposed Article 16 solar moratorium. The meeting will likely start either 6:45 or 6:30. I haven't figured that out yet to get through things like nominating and electing a chair and vice chair, but the hearing will be noticed for 7:00 PM.
Okay, thank you for making sure that that's noticed and in time. Elementary school building committee, Kathy.
I announced, I announced this last week, but I'll do it again. On December 14th, we're doing a joint meeting with the school committee at seven o'clock. The design team will be there talking about milestones, ways of doing public engagement in terms of bringing people along, sort of what our aspirations are. And so it's a, a meet and greet as well as talking about a timeline, but it's only an hour. So the rest of the school committee meeting will be the other part of the meeting. So it's just from seven till eight on the 14th, their, their, their timeline, school committee.
Thank you. Finance committee, Andy, we know you're meeting tomorrow.
Yes, we are. And Chris, a fairly ambitious agenda will do the best we can to get through it. Cause we are going to have to go back into the guidelines, which is why I was pressing to get notes from people to help us with that process. We're also going to be looking at the revisions to the financial policies and objectives, the financial considerations of the two reorganization plans that were submitted by the town manager, which we have been asked to have available the, any comments we have about the financial implications before the public hearing that is coming up. So it has to be done next week. And the last thing I want to note is that because of all of the work that has been going on around the guidelines, we are behind on the work plan and transfer memo for the next finance committee meeting. On the other hand, it is not quite the same as the others because a lot of the work of the finance committee is really defined by the charter and the budget schedule. And so it's really just a question of the reports that are our specific investigative items that we can get to that we will list, but it is not going to be as creative and different for as some of the other committees because of the nature of what we do.
And there's not a lot of things you can vote off of it. So, um, thank you, Andy. Alyssa, you have a question?
I do. I heard the word public hearing and I'm really confused.
I meant public forum.
Which is on this Thursday.
That is correct. We, TSO is taking up as it is a public forum because that is what the charter requires. So I bespoke, but the request was is that the finance committee try and provide sort of long-term financial implications of the reorganization requests, any comments that they have to, to, to the public forums so that they can be discussed then by TSO. Because we were not to report them back to the council directly, but through TSO.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. GOL, George.
Meeting Wednesday, special meeting, discussing management goals. If you have any thoughts, concerns, questions, send them to us, please.
TSO, Evan.
As was mentioned earlier in this meeting, there will be four separate TSO meetings on Thursday, the primer on the town manager's reorganization, two public forums, one for DEI, one for CREST, and then a regular meeting of TSO to deliberate and make a recommendation on the town manager's reorganization plan. I want to make clear that the reason that we are holding the primer is because public forums as defined in the charter need more than one half of the amount of time dedicated to public comment. And we really want the public forums to prioritize public comment and not comment from counselors. And so I'm going to say this nicely. Your questions and comments should all be provided during the primer. I don't want to hear anyone talk during the public forum. We're reserving that time for the public. So get all of your questions and comments out of the way during the special primer that we have created so that you can talk. See you then.
I, I don't think you were clear enough, Evan. Any liaison reports? Kathy.
Just briefly, it, it actually, I won't be able to report on what they do, but the the CPAC meets at the same time that TSO was meeting on Thursday for the final decisions on what's going to be on their, their list in terms of the money. So there, that is, they're, they're doing their final vote. Where they have a lot more requests than the amount of money they have. So it will be getting down to the list.
Well, knowing Sunny's adept nature, she'll provide us with outstanding detail. Uh, Andy, question?
I just, I just wanted to point out since we're talking about how confusing Thursday night is that we've been pressing the schools to do a public forum on the elementary school and regional school budgets. And they noticed the meeting, the public forum regarding the elementary school budget for the exact same time as the TSO hearing on the reorganization plans. And as a result, I have been in communication with the chair of the school committee about a second opportunity.
Thanks, Andy. I think we're all trying to race for the finish. Um, and there are no other liaison reports. Then moving on, we've approved the minutes. Town managers, Paul.
Thank you, Lynn. So there's a fairly extensive town manager report in your packet. Not, this, this major thing I want to focus on is the COVID variant that is now spreading around. Calls last week and this week indicate that that, we expect that to grow rapidly. So we're preparing for that. The governor has asked cities and towns to ramp up their vaccination capabilities, which we will try to do. But we're especially, a lot of concern about the holidays and the return of people from their holiday gatherings. So we'll be paying very close attention to what's going on. The good news is the university and the colleges are requiring all students to be fully vaccinated, which means including a booster shot and to be tested prior to the return to campus in January.
And UMass will require masks once they return.
Yes, continue to require masks, yeah.
Mandy Jo.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to ask Paul to update his, his memo. It still indicated that vaccinations were for 12 and ups. And I, I don't know whether page two or something, but if that could just be updated so that it's clear that five-year-old ends ups can get vaccinated.
Thank you for pointing that out.
And we, we will note that as a public service announcement. Dorothy.
Um, I just want to note that New York City is requiring vaccination for private sector. And since Amherst has been, I think, playing a strong and leading role in the defense of the people against various forms of COVID, I just wonder if you are thinking about that, um, town manager.
Requiring vaccinations of?
Private sector businesses.
Yeah, I don't think that's on our table right now. I think that would do something that the state would really be focused on.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of the town manager? Sarah.
I just wanted to ask, I know that you said that UMass is asking everyone who's returning to campus to be vaccinated and to be tested. I just wondered if there was any difference between kids who live off campus.
It's the same protocols. My understanding is it's the same protocol so that you, for you to be enrolled in campus, you need to have all three shots prior to returning to campus. And they, they've referenced students, they did not identify staff and faculty in that group.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Then let me just mention on the president's report, the three of the committees have in fact completed their transition memos and they're in your packets. Uh, and I just want to say they've been given a lot of thought. And now it's your responsibility to study them. Because when we meet on the 13th, we will discuss what are the items that you want to prevent from being carried over? Cause that's the vote that we take on the 20th. Okay, and I will only place an item on the agenda if requested. Okay, are there council comments? There are no other topics, so we are going to move into executive session. I'll be making a motion to do such. And when we do, we will not be returning to open session. I want to also note to counselors, you've been given a email with a different Zoom link. While we were in this meeting, it comes from Athena and you will use that Zoom link. So with that.
Yes, I'm just asking, could we have three minutes between the end of this and the beginning of the next?
Oh, you can even have five.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
All right. All right, the motion is to convene an executive session for the following purposes. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Paragraph 21 in Prince A2, to conduct strategic session, strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, town manager Paul Bachmann, and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town manager Paul Bachmann. And then in accordance with Mass General Law, C30AS21A7, to approve the town council executive session minutes for the following dates that appear on your screen. August 31, September 21, October 19, all in the year 2020, May 30, 13, and May 18, 2021.
Point of clarification on that?
Yeah.
The motion sheet has more dates than that, than what's on the screen.
That is because those are not ready yet. We will have to do it at another future date.
Thank you.
Question. The same is true for the next list to retain for future town council review and approval executive session minutes for the following dates, May 13th and the 18th, 2021. And to release the executive session minutes of the following dates, August 31, September 21, October 19, all of 2021. And then the final thing is in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Paragraph 21A7, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property as the chair is declared that in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. That motion has been made. Is there a second?
Hanukkah seconds.
Any other discussion? Then we're going to move to the vote. Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalini Balneum.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Patty Angelus.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Greismers and I, Mandy Jo Hanukkah.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
We will be back in session at 11:10. Thank you.